Ready? Okay, we are going to.
Yeah, I'm ready.
God, I see there messed you up. We're gonna open the regular city council meeting and we have an invocation by pastor. Are you ready?
Ray, are you ready?
Thank you, Mayor. Just bow your heads with me, please. Heavenly Father, we pause to thank you for the gift of this day and the blessing of living in such a beautiful community. We are surrounded by the evidence of your goodness in your hands. We thank you, Lord, for our city council members and all who serve in leadership. Grant them wisdom, understanding, and courage to make decisions that bring unity, justice, and prosperity to all. Let their service be guided by humility and compassion. We lift up our law enforcement officers who protect and preserve peace, our educators who shape young minds and inspire hope, our medical professionals who bring healing and comfort, and the brave men and women of our military who defend our freedom. Strengthen and shield them all with your divine hand. Now, Lord, we close with the words from your blessings in Numbers, Chapter 6. The Lord bless you and keep you. The Lord make his face shine upon you and be gracious to you. The Lord lift up his countenance upon you and give you his peace and favor in Christ our Lord's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Consevere. You'll lead us.
Please join me with your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. This time we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Abear, second by Mr. Bagby. And Ray, is there anything to call the vote? Or we'll just do a regular roll call vote? I'm sorry. I don't see the little machine. Do you?
Ours aren't working.
Okay, in that case, we will have a roll call vote. Mr. Braden?
Yes.
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 Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that one passes unanimously. Now, we have a proclamation. Now, I will get up and read, making strides against breast cancer.
We are all unable to connect, so.
Oh, well.
Wonder where it went? She said the Wi-Fi's out.
Proclamation of the City of Destin, American Cancer Society, making strides against breast cancer on the Inland Coast. Whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosis among women in the United States and is the second leading cause of death from cancer among women, and whereas in 2025, the U.S. will have estimated 319,750 new cases of breast cancer diagnosis among women, 42,680 women death because of the disease, and more than 4 billion women have had a history of invasive breast cancer and are living with the disease. Whereas the American Cancer Society has invested more than $600 million in breast cancer research grants during the past 30 years, and whereas the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer, an SABC program, is a three-to-five-mile non-competitive walk that has led to run into the largest network of breast cancer awareness events in the nation, uniting communities with the shared determination in the fight to end breast cancer. And whereas there are more than 150 MS ABC events nationwide with more than 860,000 participants that have raised more than $45 million, whereas the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer program is uniting our community and raising money to help American Cancer Society find breakthrough breast cancer research, provide free information and support, and help reduce breast cancer risk or allow early detection so that it may be more treatable. And whereas the Making Strives Against Breast Cancer on the Inland Coast envisions a future where our children no longer live with the threat of breast cancer and where everyone has a fair and just opportunity to prevent, find, treat, and survive this disease. And whereas by supporting the SABC on the Inland Coast movement, you help ensure the American Cancer Society can continue fighting for that same vision. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Destin do hereby proclaim and recognize the month of October as Making Strives Against Breast Cancer Month, and Destin encourages citizens to help save lives from breast cancer by decorating your businesses and neighborhoods in pink as part of the movement and participate in the Making Strives Against Breast Cancer of the Inland Coast to be held at Northwest Florida State College in Nielsville on October the 18th, 2025, at 8:00 a.m., signed up by Mayor Paul Reiger.
I will simply put marks with the mint information, non-competitive walk run. Come out and join us on the week of the 18th of the week from Saturday, so coming upstairs.
Very good. And this is one of the most noble causes that I think we or any elects ever been associated with, the disease that needs to go away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have item B. Item B is property rights and free board requirements in FEMA flood zones. I think we have a presentation from Mr. Morgan.
Yes, Chatham Morgan, 339 Calhoun Avenue. Mr. Destin, if Gary Jarvis knew he had a voting mayor tonight, he would be beside himself with jealousy.
Yes, he would.
I'm speaking for myself, but I've also been asked to come up here and address you by my neighbors, Miller Phillips, Mike Buckingham, and Justin Goff, as they're also looking to build on Calhoun Avenue. Little backstory on how I got here. About two years ago, I engaged the city to build on my property, and I was informed I'd have to build at almost 14 feet elevation. My current home sits at nine and a half feet and has never flooded. It was built in 1962. It's been through a lot of storms. The additional four feet made no sense to me, and I decided to revisit it later, which is why I'm here tonight. I do want to say during that process, the city staff was nothing but helpful and courteous. They're simply administering the codes that the city council has given them. I'm asking you to change those codes tonight, and it's ironic because I'm fairly certain that it was one of my city councils that I was on that voted these codes into place in the first place. But with LDCs, you don't always know what you're voting on, because I sell food for a living. Some of y'all have construction experience. I certainly don't. And we don't know the issues and the implications of them until they are brought up to us. And FEMA sets their base flood elevations and establishes a minimum at what you can build at as a community and qualify for their flood insurance program. The State of Florida Building Code rejects that and adds an extra foot on top of what FEMA recommends. The City of Destin adds an extra foot on top of what the state building code says. So I have three different levels of government, each regulating my property, and each level of government more restrictive than the other. On principle alone, I think that's wrong. If the elevations are good enough for the federal government and if the elevations are good enough for the state government, I'd argue that they're good enough for Destin. It's principled conservative government. FEMA is essentially an insurance company, and they're a really bad one at that. Last year, they lost $1.4 billion through their flood insurance program. It's socialized insurance, which is really just subsidizing repetitive loss properties, not new construction built to FEMA's unrecommended elevations. But it is the new construction paying the price by de-risking the insurance company by incentivizing municipalities to require their residents to build to excessive elevations. The community rating system that the City of Destin participates in is a FEMA program that trades property rights for insurance subsidies. Essentially, the more restrictive our zoning is, the cheaper our FEMA rates are. If you choose to leave the elevation requirements unchanged because of these subsidies, I'd ask where is it that you draw the line on restricting property rights? Are we stuck at one foot? Because surely, we could get more subsidies if we increase requirements and regulations, but that will only further erode property rates. A slight increase in flood insurance rates that are already subsidized by the American taxpayer pales in comparison to the materials that are required to build to the extra elevations. New builds will never recover those savings that the extra requirements cost. And it might take a while, but through redevelopment, every lot in Destin will be a new build at some point. There are four of us within a quarter of a mile all dealing with this at the same time. It's an issue that will continue to come up as the city goes forward. One other thing to note, I'm asking you to just mirror the code already in effect for Calhoun mixed use and South Harbor zoning districts. They are not required to build to the extra elevation requirements. They simply use the state's building codes. Please do that for the rest of the zoning districts in the city as well. Again, thank you for our commitment to our city. This is a very thankless job, but it means a lot to me that you all do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anybody have any comments on direction for this issue?
Yeah, I think we can all win here. I think, Mr. Morgan stated the CRS requirements, and yes, it is a trade-off. We are currently a six, and one of the reasons that y'all passed that was to get us from a five to a six, or I'm sorry, seven to a six, and then because that got us like 100 points. So I think the solution is not necessarily in changing the code, but there is a process that you can opt out that doesn't hurt the city. Because were we to change the code to allow that, at least I believe Michael told us today that we would lose 100 points on our rating. And then that would drop us down, and what dropping us down a level means is a 5% increase in everybody's insurance rates within the city. But I believe Kim told us that there is a mechanism that you and the other three property owners can say, we don't want to play in this game, and so we're gonna permanently opt out, and we understand we can never be covered, you know, through FEMA, through the federal insurance program. And y'all can pay whatever flood insurance you or your banks or your families want to pay. So, Michael, I'm gonna defer to you and Kim here for a minute to help explain this situation probably much better than I, so that he can see the path to what he wants to achieve without us punishing every single residential property owner in this town. Because I'm not gonna vote to raise people's insurance rates 5%. That's, you know, I want to help you, but, you know, there's 14,300 other people that I want to help them too, so.
So what, Mr. Chatham Morgan? Why I said Mr. Chatham, that's weird. What he's asking for is relief from the two-foot free board requirement, which went into effect in March of 2018. Since that time, we have been a Class 6 CRS community, and as such, folks that are covered or have flood insurance through the national program enjoy a 20% discount on their flood insurance premiums. If we were to relax the standard to the Florida Building Code minimum, which is one foot, like Mr. Bagby said, I spoke to our CRS representative today on the phone, we would lose about 100 points. Currently, we're at 2,097 points, making us a Class 6, so it would jeopardize our six, and we would be retrograded to a seven. The option that he was referring to is called a Section 1316, whereby a home can be made ineligible for coverage under a national flood insurance program, flood insurance policy. That letter comes directly from FEMA. The process begins with the city making an appeal to FEMA for consideration for 1316. It does attach to the property's deed. It's a record that would be identified in any title search, and it's forever until, unless you want to appeal it at some point down the road, but the home would have to be according compliance with local and state standards. Kim, if you had anything else to add?
Unless there's questions.
Questions, anybody? Rodney?
Thank you. I don't require flood insurance in my home. I don't have flood insurance. So is that, are we talking about people that only require to have flood insurance?
This is a flood zone on the water, on the bay.
Okay.
And I can add something to that, Counselor Braden. If you have a mortgage that is federally backed, Fannie Mae, Freddie Mac, FHA, VA, any of those, and you have an active mortgage on the home and the home is located within a special flood hazard area, there's a federal requirement that you have to carry flood insurance on the home. The maximum you can cover for a single-family residential structure is $250,000. Most mortgage companies will make you have a gap insurance for the replacement value of the home. So it's not only the FEMA insurance requirement that we're talking about, it's also the third-party insurance that you would have to acquire to fill the gap if you had a $500,000 or $600,000 home.
But again, we're talking about people that are in a flood zone.
Absolutely.
So we're not talking about the entire City of Destin, 14,000 some odd residents?
No, sir. We have, right now, we have probably 150 repetitive loss homes, and every year, we have to send out repetitive loss area letters to properties, those properties and adjacent properties. This past year, we sent out 3,000 letters to people that either should have or could have flood insurance coverage either on their townhome, condo, or single-family residential.
So that's what you're saying, is there's 3,000 residents in this town that require flood insurance?
Structures. Now, that could be condos as well. They don't have to necessarily be full-time residents. They can be condos as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, just to highlight, I don't live on the water, but all my neighbors have flood insurance. We've chosen not to have flood insurance because we have to buy private flood insurance because we're in the Cobra Zone. So there are a lot of layers. I was just trying to keep it simple, but of this issue. But there is a mechanism if they don't want to build, and I understand why, because the cost of building up is more. But there is a way for them to opt out of that also.
Kevin?
So it's from my understanding that with 2,097 points, there's multiple ways to earn points in the CRS system, right? So we could potentially do other things to still offset the 100 points that we might lose?
Theoretically, yes.
Right. So I guess I'll ask then that we get this brought back to us at a future meeting with the CRS system, ways to gain points that will hopefully offset those points so we can see the full picture? Because if we can do that and we're not losing our class, then we can all still win. Right?
Yes.
So my motion will be to have that be brought back to us at a future meeting then.
If that's a motion, I will second it. Go ahead, Tori.
The gentleman was just up there. What was his name? Morgan? I have a question for you. This Section 1316, does that defeat the purpose of what you're trying to achieve? Does that hurt you in the building process? How does that affect you or the builder in this situation?
Well, they can't hear you. Councilmember Guile, it affects the property owner because they can no longer get subsidized FEMA flood insurance on their home ever again, including if they sell it and it's not theirs anymore. So if someone's going to sell their home and needs a mortgage, and the mortgage, the lender requires insurance, they're going to have to either pay in cash for the home and not have a mortgage, or obtain private insurance or self-insure.
Okay, I guess the part that confuses me and that I want to make sure I understand is, according to the gentleman that just spoke, we're still within, he's still building within the FEMA limits. We just created higher limits based off FEMA. So I guess my disconnect is, if he's still within the FEMA limits, why does he have to file the 1316?
He doesn't have to file the 1316, first of all, but that issue has to do with our CRS rating. So we have a certain amount of points that takes us into a CRS rating that gives the residents a discount on their flood insurance.
Okay.
When we change the two-foot free board requirement, we will lose a certain number of points, which will take us down a level in the CRS rating system, which means insurance may go up 5% for everybody. That's why to Kevin, to Councilmember Schmidt's point, he said, see if we can do something to offset the points we're losing to keep our CRS rating.
I think it's clear as mud now. Thank you very much. So, Counselor Guile, in addition, we keep talking about CRS, but the city participates in the National Flood Insurance Program. And one of the major tenets of that program is that the community enforces the regulations. And so opting out with the 1316 is not really enforcing the regulations, per se, even if it were just the Florida Building Code regulations as a minimum. Right, right, I get that. I'm just saying, so my disconnect was, that's our CRS rating, but FEMA still has a requirement for them that they're achieving that's outside of our CRS rating, but it still meets the FEMA rating, so that's where I'm trying to understand.
So FEMA has requirements, and if you exceed the requirements, which we are doing by having that two-foot free board requirement, we are exceeding what FEMA says is the bare minimum. Since we're exceeding the minimum...
So then that becomes their standard now?
Since we're exceeding the minimum, we get extra points, which raises our CRS rating. If we cease to exceed it, in that way, Councilmember Schmidt is saying, let's find another way to make up for the points we're losing so that our CRS rating remains the same.
All right, I got you. Okay, and one other thing, and I promise this will be the last thing maybe, but there are three levels, as Mr. Morgan said. There's the FEMA minimum standard, which is the lowest floor will be at or above the base flood elevation. The Florida Building Code requires one foot above that, and we do apply the Florida Building Code in all these types of situations. And then the City of Destin has elected another foot. So there's two-foot of free board for the city, one foot of free board for Florida Building Code, and then at the base flood elevation for FEMA's minimum requirements.
All right, any other questions? And the motion is to have you look at if there is any other way to gain that 100 points back?
I heard correct.
And I would also suggest, particularly in Mr. Morgan's situation, it's an existing home, and is there some point or some percentage that if you add past that point, you have to come in? Or if you add 10% more to your existing home? Because it's, you know, to raise an existing home is kind of goofy. Is there a percentage that if you're under that percentage, you don't have to do that?
There is.
And what might that be?
It's when you get above the threshold around 50% that you have to come into compliance with current codes.
And changing that threshold would cause us to lose our 100 points, or have we even given that a thought?
We've given that a thought, and I think we'll come back with a response that addresses all of this.
Okay, and that's what we're looking for, I think. Any more comments on the motion on the floor?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Buckingham.
Mike Buckingham, 510 Calhoun. Thank you all. I reached out to a couple of my insurance brokers. I have a few pieces of land. Of course, I live in Calhoun where this issue is and a couple of other of my friends that it's affecting also, but it was pretty clear that the agent said that the only person that gets, obviously, you go through your insurance agent to get your flood insurance from FEMA. And the only person that they could get an answer on who gets the 5% is the guy that's actually building his house up. If I build my house up to, let's say, elevation 10, and my neighbor's sitting at 7, my neighbor don't get 5% discount, I do. So I think if we look at the part of the neighborhood, it's gonna be 100 years before everybody gets up to elevation 10. I just don't think it's fair to require us to do that extra foot, especially when we're all trying to work with handicapped as much as we are. Every foot you go up, you're getting 12 more foot of ramp. So, you know, one foot is not a lot to pull back because the city as a whole is not getting 5% discount. I understand the points, but I like what Kevin said, and Kim said, is there other ways that we can get the points without having to go here? So I look forward to seeing y'all next month on this. Thank you.
Mike, how much is your flood insurance? Do you know?
I'm sorry, sir?
How much is flood insurance?
Fielder?
Flood insurance.
Oh, oh, my flood insurance, you know where I live, in Calhoun. Mine's not that expensive. Mine's $900, I think. Yeah, for the year. It's not that expensive.
So that would increase 5%?
And I'm sitting at elevation 9.
And that would increase 5%?
Well, it's my understanding from my agents, and I would love for y'all to check with y'alls. It's my understanding, I get the 5% by raising my house. You don't if you're sitting next to me down here. Why are they gonna give you a discount for me? That's what I was told. So it is worth checking into. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments? All right, we will vote in that case. Kevin?
Yes.
I will vote yes?
Yes.
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 Okay, that one passes unanimously. Okay, Harbor and Waterways Board recommendation for jetty upgrades.
Good evening, Council. John Stevens, Vice Chairman of the Destin Harbor and Waterways Board. So we've been dealing with ongoing issues related to channel markers, lighting, maintenance in the Destin's East Pass since 2021. Just last week, a large vessel actually collided with the jetties. Nine years ago, we had another accident where we lost two lives. So we need to get this fixed. Back on November 4th of 2024, council made a motion to prioritize lighting on the jetties first, and then navigation lightings on the channel markers through the past second. To my knowledge, there hasn't been an update or a progress report on this action. Now, I understand that Coast Guard's ATON team, they usually handle the maintenance and repairs regionally, and then what they do is they pretty much focus on multiple areas at once when they do this. This year, they did reposition buoys 1 and 2 to the deeper part of the Ebb Shule, which improved the navigation, but it seems they didn't get the memo about the rest of our concerns. Those concerns remain, which are repairing and upgrading the East Pass marker, installing a new day marker at the end of the West Jettie since the current one is damaged, adding lighting to all existing nun and can buoys, and keeping buoys 1 and 2 where they are now and adding illumination to them. For a city that calls itself world-class fishing community, our current entrance conditions are far below standard. If you look over to Orange Meats, their entrance is well lit up, it's easy to navigate, and that's exactly the level of safety and professionalism we should be aiming for in Destin. So the Harbor and Waterways Board, we recommended a letter that's now before you guys, and once it gets approved, it'll get sent to Representative Jimmy Petronas, asking for his support to improve safety and navigation through the East Pass. Appreciate your time, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Go ahead.
Hey, John. So what we're looking at right now is like maybe a quarter of what we needed done was done. So there's so much more that needs to be addressed, and they, did they not get the memo literally, or you're like thinking that they were prioritizing and we didn't get that priority?
I honestly don't know. I have no contact with Coast Guard's ATON team, but like I said, that was one thing that we noticed that they moved, and we were hoping that they were gonna address the other stuff, but they didn't.
Okay, well, I look forward to getting the letter signed into Mr. Petronas. Thank you.
Mr. Destin? Yes, sir. Do we need action for you to do this letter?
I don't think it's necessary, but I would suggest that we also send letters to our senators, Ms. Moody and Mr. Scott.
Do you want to throw that in there?
Yes. Somebody made a motion, I didn't think.
There was no motion, but I'll make a motion to send this letter with additional representatives.
I'll second that.
Yep, perfect.
And that's our, to our state senators also, right, at the federal level?
US senators.
Yes, US senators, yes. All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, any discussion on the motion? All right, Mr. Braden?
Yes.
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 I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Now we're in the public comment section, and this is for speakers who want to comment about something that's not on a public hearing, and it appears we have nothing on a public hearing, so we'll start on-
Three minutes.
Yeah, it, it has a three-minute time. They'll time you. So if you guys want to, just go ahead, gentlemen, sir.
You could push the red, yeah, there you go.
Good evening. I'm Bob Schmidt, Father Kevin.
What's your address?
833 Cal Air Drive, Destin, Florida. Live on that lake that you guys are still working with. But anyway, thanks for the time. First of all, I wanted to just tell you guys the sacrifices that you do for this community. I know it's a thankless job, just like Chad said, so I can only imagine the other sacrifices I see in Kevin's life, the sacrifices that takes place away from family and kids. So thank you all very much. I want to bring up one thing, that one is a request and the other is a question. As you, as you all know, in light of the past several weeks that's taken place in this country, there's been a, a change in the mindset in the communities throughout this country. And I would like to present to you guys to take a serious consideration in putting up an ichthys on every sign in the city of Destin. Now, an ichthys is a Greek word for fish. And we pride ourselves in a city of faith. We pride ourselves as the luckiest fish in village in Destin. So in light of, like I said, it's taken place in this country and how people are standing up for faith, freedom, and family, I think it would be nice to see an ichthys put on signs when you come into Destin, like the big signs of lucky village, luckiest village in the world, parking recreation signs, just to have the fish logo. Look similar to something like this. And by doing so, I think it would establish two things. It tells the community of who we are and what we stand for, and it tells all the visitors that come into this city what we truly believe in. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No, you got to push the button.
My name's Robert Clifford. I live in Crystal Beach neighborhood here in Destin. My wife Cherry and I-
Need an address.
Oh, address is 73 Barracuda Street. My wife Cherry and I have lived here for seven years. We have a house there and a house that we just completed in the same neighborhood at 74 Barracuda, and we have a couple rentals, and, and we, those are short-term and long-term. And the reason I'm here is to, to raise awareness about what's going on in Crystal Beach and also try to garner some help from the city council. Crystal Beach a mixed neighborhood, short-term renters, vacation homes, owner-occupied properties. In our opinion, it's a very nice, pleasant place. It's got a certain feel to it, a certain energy. We love it. That's why we just built the house there over the last two years and plan to stay there. It's got a residential feel, coastal properties, a lot of greenery, nice quiet streets, and for all that, you know, about all the little picket fences that everybody knows about there, everybody in Texas and Mississippi talks about them all the time. As with many tourist popular communities, the character of this place has been changing. And we've noticed that, you know, a lot of the, the properties were, were sold off or they were rebuilt in the past years, some six-bedroom houses, mostly vacation rentals and owner-occupied places were built, and that was pretty much in the character of the neighborhood. But this has drastically and rapidly changed recently. Very, very quickly, what's happening now is corporate entities are coming in, and almost every building there is now corporate. What we're seeing are massive commercial structures that are built just to maximize rental volume and income, and they're combined with what I describe as a Walmart-style parking lot that's completely distasteful, non-functional, and unsafe. Even million-dollar homes now are being bought, ripped down, and these monsters are being built on them. Greenery and trees are removed, structures push and go beyond all limits, and whatever they can push through is implemented, either with your permission or without. Small streets are overrun, utilities are tapped out. The visual beauty of this neighborhood is disappearing, and it's rapidly becoming a place where no one's going to want to live and no one's going to want to live near it. We know that. We've been living there. A lot of people here tonight also live there. And one of the worst parts is the city is a little bit complicit in this. The lack of direction in the LDC has been a big problem. The failure to notify people, I've never lived in a community where I could have something built next door to me where the permit didn't have to tell me it was put out, where the building could be built without my, my knowing about it at all. A house was just built adjacent to our property, never knew there was a permit because there's no notification. Every city I've ever lived in, you'd have to at least notify your next-door neighbor that a structure was being built. Not here. They just show up. We just finished our driveway in our new house, and right behind us, a house is being built that we never even knew about. And it's going to definitely change what's going on for our property. The staff is somewhat confused, the residents are confused, we're getting stepped on and stepped over by developers, and in the meantime, this neighborhood, which is an integral part of Destin, is just getting destroyed. So we've seen this in communities across Florida and around the world. Everybody reads about this in the paper, Santorini, Mykonos, places like that. But for us, what we really want to do is ask if the city council will join us in fighting to fix this. We don't have a lot of time. The neighborhood is changing so fast that it, pretty soon, it's going to tip over an edge where we can't pull it back. And this place is not going to look at all what it's ever looked like to those of you who have lived there previously or know about it. So I'd like to ask a few things for the city to consider. Number one, consider a moratorium on structures built in Crystal Beach over six bedrooms until a time that we can look at this closely, figure out what the impact is, and make better guidelines. Number two, immediately make a rule that anytime you put in a building permit, either everybody with an adjacent property or within 500 feet has to be notified that the permit came in. So they have a chance to look at it before it just gets rushed through the 30-day process and construction starts. Third, I'd like to, to have the city really pushed to get the LDC clarified. So many parts of it are not clear, so many parts are misinterpreted. I, I can give you endless examples where it just doesn't work. And, and even if we did it as an interim item, we need to get that in place so that everybody knows what they're dealing with. And then I'd really also like to have a, have a resident committee from neighborhoods, I mean, any neighborhood that wanted to get involved, but at least from Crystal Beach, but some kind of an advisory committee of residents where we can bring these issues to you and help in the thought process of what's going on with that. I know that without rapid attention to this, things are going to go downhill fast because they are. And if you want to see some serious examples, I can show you stuff that'll curl your hair. There's things in our neighborhood, might be beautiful things in New York City, but if you had them next door to your house in whatever neighborhood you lived in, you wouldn't want to live there. And I'd be happy to bring that information to you at any time, but we really are asking you to come help us with this in any way that you possibly can.
Thank you. I think we share your concerns.
Yeah, I appreciate your time and effort.
Thanks.
Next.
Good evening. My name is Janet Malloy. I live at 76 Barracuda Street. There's two things I really want to discuss with you tonight. I'll be brief. About seven years ago, my husband came and presented to you about pickleball courts in the city of Destin, and I want to thank this council and the mayor of city for finally providing us with pickleball courts in Destin. So thank you very much. I look forward, as an avid player, I look forward to using them when they're finished. Secondly, I'm here sort of to piggyback on Bob Clifford's-
You can pull that down. You don't have to stay up here.
Oh, well, I feel like, thank you, thank you. I'm not quite just talking. I want to piggyback a little bit on what Bob Clifford said. There are, there are several people from my neighborhood here. We're really concerned about the growth, this enormous surgeance of these multiple-dwelling homes that are being built in our neighborhood. I live in a two-bedroom, two-bath cottage on Barracuda Street. I don't want to have a 10-story, 10-bedroom, 10-bath home behind me, which is what's going to happen with parking for 10 cars. I mean, I don't feel that it's, it's doing a disservice to our neighborhood. It's a unique area, Crystal Beach, and I want to keep it. And I think sometimes people forget that there are people that live there year-round. It's not just a rental place, short-term rentals, people live there, and, and I'm one of those people, along with others that are here. So I just wanted to let you know that we're the people that live here, we're the people that work here, we're the people that, that pay taxes here, and we're the people that vote here. So I hope you take this into consideration when you're dealing with people who are building these places who will never even come here. They won't come here. They're just building these big, huge, multi-dwelling units, and we're the ones that are going to be disrupted. So thank you for my voice.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
If I may, I'm sorry. If you don't, I was just going to tie into what they're saying here. Excuse me, thank you.
Councilmember members, thanks for having me here. My name is John Dyer. I live at 71 Barracuda Street. I'm neighbors with all these people and have been for many years. Talking about the building, the one they're talking about is an extreme thing. It, it joins my, be my southeast corner of my property. It is a vertical thing, three stories high, with a balcony on top of it with railings all the way around it. An elevator goes up to it. They built a monstrous slide arrangement out of concrete, which was the city council, or not, the city came on after they built it, after it was permitted by somebody, and forced them to tear it down because it was about four feet over the six-foot fence, my neighbor's six-foot fence. So they're over there, they've been tearing it down for at least five days now, hammers, drills, removing this great big concrete structure that never should have been there to begin with. So how that got passed, how it got built, I mean, I watched them build it, I said, well, they must have permission to do this. Well, somewhere along the line, they didn't because now they're tearing it down. But this thing has got 34 windows on the north side alone. It's just the north's elevation. I don't know what the other sides are a lot. I understand that people have a right to build. This is an LLC, by the way, out of Texas. They're also building the one directly behind Janet's house. They came in, took a two-story to a half-story house down, right after they bought the property, the thing is going up. The one behind us is 11 bedrooms, 13 bathrooms. It's a big one. The whole front, of course, is paved to the street. The building is built within five feet of the property fence. Concrete is flying into my neighbor's yard, and he said, if I find any of it in my yard, it's going to end up in your pool. So they agreed to come over and clean it up. You know, it's, it's hard when precedent gets set on the size of buildings or the, the stories, whatever it is, to say, well, you built this, but you can't build that. These things are ridiculous. I mean, I'm looking at a wall of white and glass from my corner of my property. I, I don't know, I don't know how that gets through. And the slide thing, I mean, that's, I don't know how that happened, but somebody should go over and look at that one. It, it's an apartment complex in a sense, as Bob might have said.
It's got a railing around the top that somebody can jump off on and fall.
You have to-
That's my wife. The whole top is one big top roof, flat roof with railings all the way around it with lights on top of that. So you've got 30-plus, it's all 10-foot ceilings at least, 30-plus feet of elevation, and then you have an open balcony on that, which is going to be party central. You ought to look at that before you off, you know, issue any more permits like that. I don't know what the one they're building behind Janet is, but it's going to be terrible.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Josh Pryor. I'm the general manager for a short-term rental company here in Destin, 1002 Highway 98 East.
That's not the highway.
1002 Highway 98 East, and I've had a lot of, my owners asked me about the short-term rental ordinance. So that's the reason I'm up here today, to talk to you guys or ask you the questions that I've been asked and called the city about, and not, I didn't get any answers. For the short-term rental ordinance, where is the money going towards that you guys are collecting from the? Is there, is there a place that I can go to look for that?
Yeah, yeah.
The other question is, is it being, are the hotels being asked to do the same thing to pay that? That's pretty much it, though.
I believe they are, but the city manager or the city attorney can answer those questions for you.
Awesome, thank you. And thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I just have one thing to say. I'm Cherry Clifford. I live at 73 Barracuda. The reason this is so urgent for us is the builder of this first house on Cobia Street that we're talking about told me personally that they were doing four more in our neighborhood, and they've already started on the second one. So that's, that's why time is of the essence. Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Too late.
I'll keep it short and sweet. I just, my name is Reagan Gil lightly, and I'm here-
Your address.
227 Twin Lakes Lane. And I'm here to show my support for the purchase of the land at 446 Calhoun that's on the current agenda. The purchase of this property that shares a boundary with the city park, which is Threadgill Park, it is a city on park, but is leased to Destin Little League seven months out of the year. This property could be used for multiple purposes that would enhance the park and its accommodations. And I just want to show my support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, do we have anybody left?
Ditto.
Yes, ditto. Here to Noah Shatkin, 1260 Emerald Bay Drive. Here to support the purchase of the parking area by Destin Little League. It's something that I think we really need. I don't know if any of you come out there regularly, but there's hundreds of families that go on a regular basis, and parking is really important to the baseball, you know, and it's safer for the kids and being able to walk across, and I think it's something that really, really adds to the community, and it's something we need.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. It looks like everyone, so we will move to, one more.
Great.
Almost made it.
Come on.
To piggyback on Bob Clifford's comments, Lance Ilkey, I'm at 87 Stingray Street. The house they're referring to is just, just a little south of, south of my home. And one of the things that concerns me, as we're building these very, very large homes, is when you put that parking lot in front of this house, I think the particular house here is going to be suitable for 10 or 11 cars. And what we see, I see kids walking down this street every day, going to the beach, and oftentimes they're running ahead of mom and dad. And it's happened, you know, it's happened today on houses that are smaller, but you have 11 cars parked in this driveway. I can see a four-year-old or two-year-old running in front of this and a car backing out inadvertently, and the worst thing happens. So I, I realize it's, it's tough. You have people who want to invest in the community. I get it. That, that's a wonderful thing. But there needs to be some, some reasonable restrictions about how we do this. So understand that, you know, taking action today is probably not going to happen, but please keep in mind that some of the dangers that occur when these, these big houses are built with 11 cars sitting in a driveway, and that the picture, particular example is the driveway has a, has a car over a car. So they approved 11 cars, went on, only 10 cars will fit. But I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public comment section, and we need a motion on consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any discussion? Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Yes.
I vote yes, but I did have a question that I, it wasn't quick enough. Crystal was going to change where the money was coming from for the pause contract, so...
Can she do that?
She can, she can do that. I'll vote yes, but I want to hear where, where it's being taken for, for that seven thousand's being taken.
Yes, initially, in this agenda item, we proposed an appropriation from fund balance, but at a certain request today, we'll be reclassifying that to city manager's contingency account instead.
FYI.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so Sandy, your vote?
Trammell, yes.
Yes.
All right, that one passes. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. Item 4A is in regards to the special magistrate services. We did an RFP 2509. We had one respondent, Ms. Emily Rogers. She certainly met the qualifications for that, for filling that position, so we would recommend we enter a, an agreement with Ms. Rogers to provide those services for our code enforcement hearings. With that said, we will keep the existing contract in place with the current magistrate to serve as a backup in the event Ms. Rogers is unable to attend a hearing.
All right, thank you. We need a motion on contract.
I move that the city council accept Emily Rogers' proposal and approve her contract for special magistrate services.
All right, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Trammell, yes.
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 That one passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Item 4B is the Mattie Kelly Outfall Project. This is to approve the RFP to put that project on the street. You recall, we've got a million-dollar appropriation from the state to build this. It is designed and ready to go, so we're just looking for your approval tonight to publish and advertise this RFP.
I guess we'll make a motion to approve RFP 25-13-PW for Mattie Kelly Art Fall, Outfall Project and go out for bid.
All right, we have a second?
I'll second that. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Okay.
Yes.
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 I vote yes.
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 All right, that one passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. The next item is 4C. This is from our Public Works. This is for the milling, reservicing, and restriping of selected roadways. This is batch one from our authorization that was approved in our budget. These are part and parcel of our renewal and replacement schedule. This is about a $1.5 million worth of projects. It includes Noriega Road, Magnolia Drive, Lagoon Drive, Choctaw Drive, Harbor Lane, Juniper Street, Mar Street, Evergreen, Primrose, and Oleander Avenue. So we would ask your approval.
Okay, we need a motion on those projects.
I'll move to authorize a city manager to issue, issue purchase orders to H&amp;T Contractors LLC, fourteen streets identified. I don't know why that's part of the motion, but...
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion on the issue? I see no discussion, then I'll call the vote. Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
I vote yes.
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 Passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is 4D. This is in regard to the FRS Social Security questionnaire results. At the last meeting, we were asked to poll our employees through a survey and ask two questions. Would you enroll in FRS and Social Security were, if it were offered? And two, should FRS and Social Security be offered as an option to city employees? Prior to publishing that survey, we held some information sessions, including representatives from our thrift plan, representative from Florida Retirement System, and representatives from Social Security. We held two different sessions of each to ensure that everybody within the city had the opportunity to participate. We had some very good participation and interaction during those sessions. After that, we published the survey for one week. It was on Survey Monkey, and it was emailed to each city employee. And again, question one was, would you enroll in FRS and Social Security as a city employee were it offered? We had eighty-three respondents, sixty-seven or eighty, just over eighty percent said they would, sixteen, just under twenty percent said they would not. The second question in that poll was, regardless of whether you would participate or not, should Florida Retirement System and Social Security be offered as an option to city of Destin employees? Again, there were eighty-three respondents, eighty-one employees or ninety-seven point five percent said yes, and two employees or just two and a half percent said no. So that's the results of the survey you asked us to publish and put out, so it's there for whatever action you choose to take.
All right, counsel, comments, motions?
I just have a question. How many employees do we have?
Hundred and fifteen, full and part-time.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct, but we, we, we published it citywide, so those that may have participated, but they currently, part-time, already are in Social Security because they don't qualify for thrift plan, so...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is there a motion? Because I can't get my computer to find out. Is there information?
Is this counsel discretion?
Right. We now have the report that we asked to give us the feeling of what the employees think. It's pretty overwhelming that they would like the opportunity to participate. So now we're at the point of going forward with that. And I think there's a couple of options. A motion to rescind the previous action of the council can be made by anyone who was on the prevailing side, and the absent members are considered to have been on the prevailing side under that motion to rescind. So, you know, we'll entertain a motion to rescind the previous action, which was to not make FRS available.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Destin?
You and I were on the losing side.
Yeah.
Mr. Destin, may I clarify?
Yes.
According to your policy, the first motion needs to be motion to consider rescission. And if that motion, no, he said motion to rescind. This one is a motion to consider rescission first, and then if that passes, then you can make a motion to rescind, and that will be on the next agenda, a formal motion to rescind.
Okay. Now, the motion...
So the first one is the motion to consider rescission.
Yep. I, I, I'm afraid I disagree slightly with that. It says a motion to rescind may be made, and if you make a motion to rescind, then it would be put back on. I don't think you need a motion to reconsider and a motion to rescind. But in any event, the motion to rescind, all of us that did not make that meeting, that would be Mr. Braden and myself, are considered to be on the prevailing side. So, you know, my interpretation of that, and I'll let the city attorney give her opinion, is that a motion could be made by either Mr. Braden or myself, or one of the people that was on the prevailing side.
Agreed.
So...
So it's basically anybody except for Councilmember Bagby and Councilmember Trammell, I believe.
That's exactly right. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion, mayor, whether it's to...
Your motion to rescind?
To rescind.
Yeah. And I will second that motion. Discussion?
Yeah, just for clarity, we're motion, making a motion to put it on the next agenda, right?
That's where it'll roll to, I think.
And, and just to be clear, you're going to then have that motion on the next agenda, but you still, if, if you do change the vote and decide to go with FRS, there's still going to be two public hearings with the ordinance. So this will be discussed multiple additional times.
That's correct.
And can I also clarify, offering the staff FRS means that the city would incur an annual cost. What is it, Crystal? To help make sure those employees that want to have FRS, which it seems like that's the direction they want to go, to take care of our city, our city staff, we, the city budget, would give up the money that has to match, and what is that amount on a yearly basis?
So the, the difference between what we're in now, and if we go to, into FRS plus Social Security, the difference is $480,000 a year if all full-time staff join. Looks like we have about, the survey showed that eighty percent would join, so we're at about $384,000 a year out of a $60 million a year budget.
Okay, thank you.
I, I can't support it. I respect our staff, I think, for nearly five years, since I've been up here. I've asked, I've given, I've helped raises, cost of livings, whatever we can do to potentially help these staff members, we've done it. But unfortunately, I think this was done the wrong way, and I can't, I can't add the additional cost of the citizens in my experience, and the questions were asked, and, and just because we didn't like the answers that were given the first time, when you restate a question to somebody and make it sound a little bit differently, you're gonna get a different answer as well. So I do respect our staff, but I can't do this to the taxpayers of the city.
Mr. Giles, any comment?
No, sir.
Counsel?
I had a meeting, leadership meeting, with almost forty staff members about eight days ago, and I was on the, no, we're not gonna do this, we're not gonna pay for that. But after talking to the staff, and many of them have been with the city maybe three or four years, I felt like they were not well represented, and I wasn't, I didn't understand what we weren't doing for them at that time. And I feel like it's not a cost to our taxpayers to get them, staff members, that we train and they stay because we're taking care of them. Because right now, we're going through some staff members because we don't have the benefits that other cities do. We're training people, and then they're leaving and going to another city that does have options that takes care of them monetarily and benefit-wise. So I feel like in the long run, that three or $400,000 we have to spend every year to not have to retrain people, because you're spending that much money when you're hiring and retraining, and then you're losing time from the staff that are waiting because this person's not trained and they're not, and they've got to help them train. I personally feel like this is something we need to do so we can continue to draw in the best and the brightest, and keep the best and the brightest, and take care of our staff that's here, and make good on a promise that we want them to stay, and we want them to have benefits that make it worth them staying. So I will change my vote.
Mr. Bagby?
Yeah, I think everybody knows how, how I feel. Give them the option. You know, we're not forcing them to go one way or the other, but we, we, they deserve the ability to choose their own path. We, we can't have one of our prioritized strategic goals as offer livable wages and benefits to attract and maintain a high caliber qualified staff and not trust them to do what's best for them and their families individually. I do have one question, because now I'm a little confused on whether we're voting to, to bring back a motion to rescind, or we're voting on a motion to rescind, and then, which means, what's coming at the next meeting? The motion to rescind, or are we bringing back the ordinance? I'm sorry.
At the next meeting, it should be the vote on the motion to rescind, whether you're actually going to rescind.
Okay. And I know for some reason, this time of the year, all, and I'm the, a big violator because I won't be here at the next meeting, and I just came back from ten days away, but I don't know everybody's personal schedule, but I'd like for all of us, or at least six of the seven of us, to be here so that we don't get into this process of, well, we had two, four, and three against, and now we gotta go back through this process again and, and a rescission. Are we gonna have six or six people here next time? I mean, I don't have to be here, but if two other people are gonna be out, I would prefer us not to have four people deciding the, the future of our staff's fate. I'm just...
The only absences I'm aware of for the next meeting are Councilmember Bagby and Mayor Fabby Wagner. Is anybody else? You're gone, Teresa?
Yep. And I won't be back till the second...
So then we would have five.
Back, back into probably dangerous territory again. The motion, can it include that it be on the next meeting, in which seven council members are...
You could do that.
I would say six or more, because something's gonna, somebody will get sick or have a kid get sick, so I would just say six. If we could.
Okay, the motion maker, Mr. Braden, will you modify it to say the next meeting, we're six people?
Correct. Yes, sir, I will.
Is that normal to pick and choose how many council members are at a meeting to decide upon making votes for things? Is that like normal? We can just start saying, hey, only want to talk about this thing when Ms. Trammell's not here, or Mr. Braden's not here? Is that acceptable?
Is this coming from the same person in the last meeting, say, let's just spend $400,000 of taxpayers' money, and let's figure it out later on, on the piece of property for a parking lot? Come on, I mean, this is council. Council gonna do what we want.
Possibly. I think we're gonna talk about that in a couple items, too, but that might have been me. I'm just curious, is it normal to pick and choose when things come to be?
It is not normal.
Okay.
But I will say this, we, because, and we can do this all year long, we can have five people or four people make the decision, because that's a quorum, and then we can come back to the next meeting when the three people that were absent that disagree with that decision make a motion to rescind, and we can just keep kicking this can. I would rather us...
Be honest up front.
Be honest up front, have, have this decided at a meeting where there is a supermajority present, and stop kicking the can, because it's not helping us with the staff, and it's not helping us with, with anything, to be honest with you. But if we want to do it when there's four people here, because I'll miss the next one, and if we decide to tell the staff no again, I'll make the motion to rescind at the meeting following that. So, I mean, I, we, we just need to, to treat, yeah. It is not normal, though. You're, you're absolutely correct. What is normal is we could ask that it be put on the second meeting or the first meeting in November. That, that is a normal way we do things, and I, you know, if the...
Everybody supposed to be here then, we hope?
Nobody here then?
No. I won't be here the first Monday, and neither will the mayor.
And neither will the mayor.
No.
Do we have two meetings in November?
Yes. The second Monday of November.
But even without just Councilmember Abir and the mayor, we still have six, so you said six.
I, I would say, go ahead at the next meeting. The heck with it. And if there's only four people show up, you can put it on the agenda for the meeting after that, because...
You're gonna be at another meeting?
Because we do have to have two readings, and the thing is, we only have one meeting in December, right? Do we have to?
We never changed it.
Well, and, and the issue is, if you have six, and one of them happens to be the mayor pro tem, they can't break a tie.
Just saying.
Just saying.
I'm sorry I brought it up.
Just saying.
I just want to get this thing resolved.
Okay, we were gonna have how many people at the next meeting?
It'll be five, one, two, three, four, five of you.
The five of you. Just me and Jim and the mayor.
And the mayor.
So three of us.
Three of the eights.
Three, five.
Well, I, unless I forgot how to count, mostly we'll come out the same way anyway.
So the second meeting in November.
Yeah. Okay, can I speak?
Yes, go ahead, Tori.
I have to agree with Councilman Schmidt on this. I mean, to me, it seems like we're up here trying to count votes to figure out how something's gonna go. I don't think this is how we need to handle it. I think we just put it on the next meeting, see how it plays out, and, because if we're doing it that way, anytime there's a contention where it's a close call, then what do we do? Just automatically say, oh, it's rescinded, let's go ahead and vote again? I mean, it, let it fall the way it falls.
No, I agree with you.
All right, so we're back to the original motion. Anyone else have a comment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I clarify the motion?
Please do.
Okay. First of all, Mr. Bagby, did you make that motion?
No. Mr. Braden did.
Okay. And the motion is motion to rescind or motion to consider rescission? According to your...
Motion is to consider rescission at the next meeting.
There we go, that'll clarify it for us.
So tonight's motion, according to your resolution, is motion to consider rescission, and... and if that passes, then motion to rescind can be at the next meeting or any future meetings.
Right.
I think you're correct.
Mm-hmm.
So, motion to consider rescission, and then we'll put the motion to rescind next meeting or after?
I think that's what it says. Kim, do you agree?
That's what we're saying. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Braden?
Yes.
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 A vote yes?
Yes. No.
All right, that passes six to one. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Temp. The next item is regarding the business tax receipt. We were asked at the last meeting to bring some information back regarding, A, how many BTRs are currently registered, and in your package, you have a number of 953, but I can give you an updated number. Since publishing the agenda, that number is now 1,034. So, we've had some pretty good movement over the last few days. But what we have discovered is that, according to the property appraisers' website, there's about 2,725 properties listed as businesses in the city of Destin. So, our new MGO software will allow us to program in a notification on a monthly basis of those 2,725 minus the ones who have already registered, and send out a monthly reminder and notice that you're delinquent, at the point of delinquency. And that will go out each month until they're either taken out of the database or they come into compliance. In addition to that, we, our software can generate a letter that would supplement those email notifications, and we're also looking at mimicking the county's version, which is a card with a QR code on it. One of the distinctions and difficulties we're having in resolving that is the county has one fee, and so you scan the QR code and you pay that fee. We have numerous fees, so they're kind of all over the place, and the transition from our previous system to our current system was not as seamless as we'd like it to be. So, there's some effort that's going into making sure that as you re-register in the new system, you get the right category and pay the right fee. That will roll out in next year's renewals, but that's kind of one of the obstacles we're up against right now. But we are seeing some movement, we are being a little more aggressive with notifications. One of the fallacies in the previous system was that if you didn't renew your BTR this year, you didn't get a notice next year that you needed to have a BTR. So, there was a diminishing number that would, as folks would fall out, they failed to be noticed that they needed to register. So, we're recapturing those, and hopefully we'll see some better numbers coming in to capture more of those 2,725 and get them registered.
Do we have any idea, City Manager, how many we sold last year?
The 953 would be the number that would drive us to that question of how many that we had registered. Is that accurate, Dave? Is that number?
I think he's talking about last year. The 953 got updated to 1034. Last year, I think, is around 1,200, around 1,200, Mayor.
So, we're getting close. And, you know, I'm the one that asked this question, of course, and I understand that you all are laboring under a number of difficulties here. So, if you're moving toward making it better next year, then I would like to wait and see how we do that. I did fool around with it today, and of course, when I tried to click on renew, there is no renew. And so, we're all new, and that's one of the major glitches we're having right now. And, you know, I appreciate the difficulties you're having. Hopefully, we won't have those next year, because we need to capture all 20, how many hundred?
2,725.
Yeah, we need to capture all of those next year, and so if I were to wander into your office today and say, I'm here to pay my BTR, what kind of reaction would I get?
We'd be pleased.
We'd be pleased.
And we would help you. Sherry takes the load of that, and she would, she sits down with them, and she walks them through the process to make it as easy as possible.
All right, Sherry.
And, yes, so, yep, so they would be accommodated.
Okay. And I think the real off throw or throw-off was that we didn't say, okay, all of you guys, your new application's now, and you have to have your seating capacity in a restaurant, of course, which is what I'm working on from BPR. And so, we have to get them involved. But anyway, we're going to make it a lot better next year, right? Thank you.
Mayor, I would like to give kudos to Sherry. She walked me through mine.
Thank you, Counsel. Next item, 4F, is the 446 Calhoun proposal parking at Thurgill Park. First off, in your packet is a contract. If you choose to execute that contract for a purchase price of $400,000, there's some provisions in that contract for allowing us to do some due diligence to make sure that we can feasibly locate parking on that. And I think that's 30 days that would give us an out if that became a problem. We were asked at the last meeting to have one of our consulting engineers review the site, and we have done that. He identified that 65 spaces would be a reasonable number. I think our engineer had identified maybe 70, so they're kind of concurring with one another. The consulting engineer also agreed that the development costs for those 65 spaces would be between $500,000 and $600,000, which may be a little on the high side. If we chose not to do a impervious surface, while there would still be a lot of development costs, we could probably save maybe $100,000 bucks, so maybe get in at $400,000. In any event, those spaces would range somewhere between $13,000 and $15,000 a space. That's with the acquisition cost of the property and the development cost. We looked at the property on the Calhoun and Hickory Streets, and the consultant identified about 30 spaces that have the potential. However, they also identified that there's some drainage structures and drainage systems on that property, there's some wetlands on that property, that the cost to develop would probably be prohibitive. By the time you mitigate the wetlands and go do some off-site mitigation, do the fill, do the permits, and then manage the stormwater in a different way, so there's a lot that would go on and try to develop that into parking. So, we think that would probably be cost prohibitive. The cost per space on the 446 site would be considerably less than those on these areas. But if that was something we wanted to, you know, look through further in the future, we could certainly do that. But there's a lot that's going on, and that's right-ofways component.
I have a couple of questions, Larry, and I don't really know for sure if you have all the answers or not. But, so the purchase price is $400,000, and you stated it's like a thousand-something per space of the 65. So, for just the average, you know, citizens that's watching, that wants us to buy this, it's $400,000 purchase to have more parking, that sounds great. But truly, the total cost is going to be close to $800,000 or $900,000 total when we're finished with what we have to do to prepare it, to get it ready to make it a parking lot. Is that correct?
That's correct. The acquisition cost is $400,000 for the property, and we anticipate somewhere between $400,000 and $600,000 for the development of a parking lot, depending on whether we went with a gravel or a hard surface with an impervious surface.
And that would also be a little lengthy as well? Five, six months, even after we purchased it, that it would be, started to be in progress of a parking lot, correct?
Well, it would take time to close the deal, of course. There's some demolition that has to be done, clearing the site, so, you know, development order, a land use change would have to be done, because it's a residential property now, and it doesn't allow for a parking facility. Not that we can't do that, I mean, that would certainly be, but that would be part of the process. There's some, you know...
Steps.
Initiatives that have to take place in order before we start parking cars on it.
All right. And then, last question, where does the money come from for the $400,000 purchase price, and then the $500,000 development price?
The funds we have discussed would be from the parking fund, since it is parking. Whatever arguments one of you might want to make for or against, that would be up to you.
Thank you.
I got the same question I've had the last two times. Have the surrounding property owners been notified that there's potentially a lighted parking lot going next to their home?
We, I have not, and I don't believe we have as a staff notified anyone.
Do we typically notify anybody there, or we just throw up a lighted parking lot next door to somebody's home without saying anything?
I'm not sure.
So, if, so we would, we wouldn't have anything to notify them of right now, since we don't own the property. But if we were going to go through the process that the city manager described, there would be at least four public hearings due to the future land use and zoning changes, right? So, there would definitely be notifications to property owners.
So, that would be after we spent $400,000, and if they came in here standing room only against it, then what do we do? We just stuck with a $400,000 piece of property that we can't do anything with?
Yeah, there would be no notifications unless you all asked the city manager to provide that separately, because that's not currently in the code for purchasing property.
It'd seem like if we got to rezone it and all that, it'd be behooves to...
We have notifications for development, but we don't have notifications for purchases. But you could, if you want to purchase the property, you can simply direct the city manager to do additional notifications.
Yeah, you too.
That's just me, I just thought it would be smart. I mean, I'd want to know if I lived in a house next door that, you know, was fixing to go up, not after I bought the property, and it was kind of too late now, we've already spent $400,000 of taxpayers' money, so, you know, too late.
If you enter into the contract, you can direct the city manager to make those notifications, and then there would still be a 30-day contract period, and during that 30-day period, as the contract is currently written, you have the ability to cancel the contract for the entire 30 days if the parking lot, I'm sorry, if the property is deemed not feasible for a parking lot for any reason in our sole discretion. So, that could be one of the things that we look at once the city manager provides notifications, who comes to the meeting and complains or reaches out to council and objects or supports the purchase?
Yes, sir. So, I'll go ahead and make a motion to enter into a contract with the following revision of notifying the adjoining property owners of the potential purchase. To enter into a contract with the revision, yeah.
I'll second, just so we can talk about it.
Sure. Thank you very much. So, the taxpayers' money, you're talking about the taxpayers that are paying into the parking lot? Because the taxpayers' money, that's the money that we're, potentially would fund it, though, is the parking fund, which comes from parking revenue, which I guess some people that might live in unincorporated Destin would be paying into that, but city of Destin residents shouldn't be paying at those parking lots, and if they are, I mean, they can get the free decal. Do we need additional parking at this city-owned property where there's activity happening?
I think...
Do you think we need parking?
I think anywhere we have activity that's serving our citizens, parking is always a good idea, and this is certainly...
I mean, is there a need to add parking at a city-owned park where there's people parking on right-ofways and sidewalks?
Yes, sir.
So, we, so it's a need?
I would agree. Yes, sir.
I mean, I hear some of the questions and concerns, I hear it. Could we sell the property if we end up finding out that something's not going to work, if we end up closing on it, let's say, but then something happens? Could we sell it? Should we own it?
I'm not sure that I'm familiar with a property disposal policy within the city, but I would think if you find the surplus, there's provision in statutes to sell pretty much anything we own, so I would say yes.
Got you. Yeah, I mean, we all know, I mean, obviously, I'm supportive of it, right? This is, I get it, this is baseball, sure, but this is more than just the Little League, okay? In my opinion, this is a city-owned property, that there's an adjoining parcel connected to it. Let's take the Little League out of this, take whoever you want out of it. There's an adjoining parcel to our city-owned property that the city has the opportunity to purchase. It just, and there's a need, there truly is a need. It could be expensive, you're right. I mean, we already have community members volunteering to clear the land and to prep it for development for free, one of our contractors, through the city of Destin. So, you know, it's a need, and, you know, if you don't want to support it, it's fine, but I just see that, especially having parking funds available that we haven't really done anything with, I think this is a great opportunity for the city to do something. That's all I got.
I got questions.
Tori?
I have a couple of questions. First, I'm looking at the estimate of roughly 13, 8 to 15, 3 per space, and you're saying that's for the parking lot at 446, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that also the cost for the 30 spaces you're talking about on Calhoun?
No, sir.
Okay, so those costs are going to be, what, approximately $7,600, $7,700?
No, they're going to be considerably more than that, once you consider the weather mitigation, the permitting, and the offset of the stormwater facilities that are there now. I don't know that we've got a firm number on that, because that's a pretty complicated calculation, but both our city engineer and our consulting engineer said those would be considerably more than the ones on 446 Calhoun.
Okay, but nobody gave us a price, because we're looking at roughly $7,600 per parking space for 446 Calhoun, if you subtract the cost of the house, right?
Yeah, I'll check your worth of that, yeah.
Okay, so, I'm just kind of curious, because we can always designate another piece of property as wetland to develop wetland property, and I realize there's a cost incurred with developing wetland property, but that designation's pretty easy, it's pretty simple to do. So, I'm real curious as to what the cost to add those 30 spaces are, because if it's substantially less than the, than the price per space for the 446, I mean, I don't know why we're not looking into that, right? Additionally, the only way I would even consider supporting this is if we completely negated that last petition to give control of the park over to the Little League. I mean, I don't see us spending a million dollars for a small portion of the citizens just to give the use or control of that park to a citizen or an organization.
All right.
Just one point of clarification, if I could. There is no, there is no control of that part by an organization. It was not given to the, to the organization, control.
No, no, but he was asking for it, and didn't we table it or something? I don't think we voted.
The leases all signed off and complete without it.
Okay.
Mr. Bagby?
Yeah, the mayor's not here, but he posted on Facebook, and I know a lot of people got, I guess, a lot of people's hair standing on end, probably the attorneys, but it started an interesting conversation of a lot of things, people going back and forth, and I guess we are not, at least in the opinion of several people in the mayor's stream there, optimally using what we have. So, there's some spaces, and they were talking about where the old batting cages were and all this other stuff, and I was like, haven't been out there in a couple of months since this, or right after this first came up, but I guess there probably are some, because nobody said, no, that's not right. So, that would be the first, I, they need more parking. Now, you know, and I know one of the arguments against it is if we truly needed parking that bad, some, one of those young entrepreneurs who owns a house down there would be parking people in their front yards, just like every football game I've ever been to. Near, you know, there'd be somebody, five bucks, 10 bucks, just park your car here for a couple of hours, they would be doing that. But I would just ask the staff to make sure that we have looked at... But I would just ask the staff to make sure that we have looked at, and I know there's, I know the previous city engineer had, what, two or three plans for additional parking there? Robert?
Yes, sir. I've found several layouts that he had done before he had left.
Okay, so I would just ask that before we spend a million dollars, that we make sure we've optimized what we already control. Number two, you ask about the timelines, okay, it's gonna be a lot more than five months, because first, we're gonna have to change and authorize parking to be there, because that's not the land use that is currently approved for that, that address. So that's gonna require two readings, that's gonna, you know, approval, and then we'll probably send one of them back because some T wasn't crossed, or I wasn't dotted, or whatever, and then it'll come back, and then I noticed in the contract, I was looking, this is a residential, which is what we're buying, but that's not the purpose we're buying it for, so there's no environmental inspection in that contract. I want at least a Phase 1 environmental inspection. There's a lot of things that went on in this city even before Mr. Destin was born, and God only knows what was dumped on that lot. And so before we go start digging it up or, you know, redeveloping it, I want at least a Phase 1 environmental inspection on that property, and I want it, and that'll take more than 30 days, would be my guess, so I want it written in the, I would like to see it written in the contract, subject to a Phase 1 or any environmental inspections, because it gives us, it's the standard residential, you got five days to inspect it, and you can reject it for that. Yes, I know we put in the comments or additional terms, we've got 30 days, but I just wanna make sure that on day 31 or day 35, when the environmental inspection comes back and says, yeah, somebody was probably dumping fuel oil or motor oil or something there 40, 50, 80 years ago, that we know that. So I'm not sure I'm, I'm ready to approve it tonight, but I'm still willing to engage. The other thing, somebody brought up an idea, again, in the conversation online, the citizens have parking passes or parking decals, whatever the heck we have on our cars. A lot of these kids live in Kelly and Emerald Bay and other places, you know, maybe we get the non-citizen parkers. Now, my theory is they just go to somebody's house, they all hop into suburban who is a resident, and they come over to the field and that, but then that negates the need for some of the additional parking. I don't know, I just don't think we're, this is, this issue is ripe yet for a final decision. But I'm willing to support additional parking there, whether it's in the right-of-way, you know, or whether it's on that lot. I just, I still have too many questions, and I'd like for somebody in the staff, if you could lay it out. Here's the process, you know, first, we gotta get the land use correct. Well, first, we gotta get it under contract, then we gotta get inspections, then we got, and concurrently, we can be doing the land use changes. And then once we get the land used right, you know, by the way, that is where the person, the neighbor's gonna come out and go, you're building what next to my house I didn't? When I bought my house 80 years ago, you know, it was a house. It wasn't a parking lot that had lighting, LED lighting, I'm sure, you know, down, you know, low lighting, but, and that's where you'll get those people. So I just wanna know all the little steps that we're gonna go through and all the hoops so that we all understand. And then the money is still an issue with me, but if, you know, if we're charging the non-residents to actually park there, okay, maybe that, that recoups some because that's, that's what they're doing. I don't know, I'm just, I'm just not there yet on the contract and on the information that we have so far.
Sandy?
I just have a question. I guess it's for Kevin, because I haven't been down there lately either. Is there any paved parking right there now?
The paved parking is right along the boundary of the park, about 20, 20 spots, yeah.
Okay, so we do have some paved?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just on the street, basically, you know, like, it just kinda goes up.
Mm-hmm.
Everything else is the, Mr. Bagby brought up a Facebook post, I think one of the 65 comments on there was the ones that he mentioned. I think all the other 60-ish were kind of in favor of it, but there used to be a little T-ball field that a lot of us played back in that area that he's talking about, and that's dirt right there. Thankfully, we've had some community members, such as the San Tucci's, bring over some mulch and gravel and things like that to help people kinda park in there, and then beyond that, people park in the right-ofways and the grass on the sidewalks, things like that, every night.
Okay, I was just, excuse me, I was just, I haven't been down there in a while, and I didn't, I don't remember, the paved parking, it was all dirt when I was there.
So they're actually starting the fall league next week? Y'all should come down there Monday through Thursday. It's not fun.
I will, I've been out of town.
But the designs that Robert's talking about, I think those were about a million dollars at that last city engineer. It was a big retention pond he drew up, I mean, it was a, it was a massive deal, Mr. Bagby, but those, those designs that you're referring to.
Yeah, it was between $400,000 to $1,000,000.
It was massive. Yeah. Lot of ways to not do something beneficial for our city here tonight, but I understand we all have our answers.
All right. Well, I have one comment. Kevin's right, we need parking there, we've needed parking there since I was coerced into being a T-ball assistant coach, and that was a very long time ago.
You have granddaughters out there, don't you?
Absolutely. But Mr. Braden also has a good point, that if we buy it and get massive pushback from the neighbors on rezoning it and putting a parking lot in there with lights, we may well have bought something we can't or shouldn't use. Now, I've been exposed to quite a few contracts to purchase and seen, I lost count of how many have zoning changes as a contingent that is necessary for closing. Also, when you put those kinda things in there, generally, you give the person more money because you're paying them to wait. And so if we could craft the contract to have it dependent on, you know, zoning change, Mr. Bagby's environmental study, and give the property owner enough money that would make it worthwhile for them to wait for several months, and we may have to get through that, then I would support it tonight, and...
So we can make this, amend that motion to not exceed the appraised value with those additional items that you're talking about?
And if you will make, if you will amend your motion, and the second will agree, then, then we would have something that I would feel comfortable going forward with because we would answer the two big questions.
I'll amend it to that, yep.
Mr. Gall, do you have a second on that? Do you agree to that?
I'm still, wanna find out what the actual cost for the 30 lot spaces are. I mean, we've asked for that since the very first date, and we still don't have a cost for that, so I don't, I don't know how many times we have to ask, how many different ways we have to ask, if I have to say, pretty please, put sugar on top, who I have to kiss, but I just wanna know how much it costs to get those 30 damn spots.
Well, if you amended, if you agreed the amendment, we would have plenty of time to do that, because we're waiting on a zoning change, and that'll take us, Kim?
Probably have to be at least a 60-day contract, but I'm gonna talk to the, one of our, a couple of our consultant engineers and see what they think as far as timelines for a Phase 1 as well.
Then, then I will agree.
All right. So we have a modified motion on board that says we will require a zoning, zoning change will be a contingency that is necessary for us to close, the environmental study is necessary, and, and Tori would like to see the answer to those questions. We won't put that in the contract, but we do need to see it. All right, any other discussion on it? Yes, sir, Mr. Braden?
Thank you. I didn't get to see the Facebook post, and I hate that, because I know that's where all our experts are. We just can't get them to run for city council or nothing else, so they've got all the answers, and so I hate, I hated it, I missed all that, but why are we, why did we originally decide to purchase this property? Is there, are we getting a lot of complaints for parking in people's yards? Is Sheriff's Department getting a lot of wrecks or complaints? Does the city get a lot of complaints down there?
Captain Fuldham, if they're getting much from that area, I don't know that...
Off the top of my head, I'm not familiar with any traffic crashes down there or parking complaints, but I can't say 100% without going back and looking it up.
Does the city get complaints from...
I have not received any in my office, I mean, we certainly hear from folks that utilize the park of, you know, some deficiencies in the parking, so other than that...
I just asked a question. Did the property owner reach to us? Is that what happened, Kevin?
That is correct. I believe two to three years ago, the property owner as well did it. Not sure what happened, but, and then just recently, the property owner called back.
So we don't have a problem, we just wanna buy the property.
Say that again?
We don't have a problem, we just wanna buy the property.
Well, is it a problem to park in right-aways and on sidewalks? Is that...
I just, I just asked the question.
Haven't we hit the water main behind the field once or twice before, Lisa? Like, cars hit water mains?
I just asked that question, Kevin.
Oh.
I just got through asking the city and the sheriff's department about the complaints, and there is, there is no complaints, that's why I made the comment.
You said problem.
There's no problems, any complaints, problems, however you wanna say it, down there, so how did we come up with this million-dollar piece of property? I mean, normally, we have a problem.
The definition of problem, that's fine.
Normally, we have a problem or a situation that we're trying to fix, that's, that's all I was asking.
Okay, any other discussion?
I just have, I guess it's a question. I was under the impression that this may mitigate some of the encroachment issues that we have had down there. Is that true or not?
So we, we haven't gotten a survey yet, but that is part of the contract, and we would be reviewing to see what encroachments, if any, exist. There's certainly been discussion that encroachments may exist, but we have not verified that yet. We would if you go under contract.
I was gonna say, do we need to specify that as well?
It's already in there. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? If not, we will vote.
One more quick question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Tori.
This is gonna, this is just first round, we're gonna have to vote on this again.
Right now, you're making basically a counter offer if this motion passes, so we'd have to run this by the seller, and if they approved it, you'd have a contract come back.
And if they don't, you don't.
And if they don't, we don't. So you're, you're making amendments to the existing contract right now, including a inspection period for environmental Phase 1, at least, and zoning and future land use entitlements being put into place.
So all before we even get the very answer that we asked for from day one about those 30 spaces?
No, not necessar, excuse me. We will get those answers, because after all, we are saying this isn't gonna happen until we vote to rezone it, and we can get those answers way before that even comes through, because that is a drawn-out 60-day at best, maybe more, and we know you want the answers, and we'll get them.
Thank you.
You're talking about public hearings at LPA and city council, so there would be six. Three for each.
Yes, and I would, I would suggest that we will probably have to negotiate that down payment, because what is it, $4,000 in this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't wait 90 days and possibly not sell my property for $4,000, so hopefully you will be able to come up with a figure that's acceptable to all of us. All right, Mr. Braden?
I think we're putting the cart before the horse, I'm voting no.
Yes.
Mr. Bagby?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, that passes six to one.
So just so I understand, y'all go back to the owner, y'all bring a revised contract back to us with all the answers and all the agreements, we vote on the contract, that contract, if we, everything's worked out, and then we go into the changes and the inspections and all this other stuff. Correct?
Correct, assuming the Realtor and the seller accept the changes.
Well, yeah, that's true.
Yeah. All right. Can I, can I ask a question about the 30 spaces?
He's talking about the ones on the right-of-way that he, we took on that?
Yes, yes. Yes, I, I spoke with the engineer today, and in looking at those spaces, those are pull-in spaces, which means the cars will be backing out on Calhoun, which is very dangerous. They need to be back-in spaces, so if you're gonna consider cost, make sure we get the right kinda parking spaces in there. That may make a difference, it may not, I do not know.
Right now, aren't they parallel parking, which means they're backing in off Calhoun anyway, correct? That's how people are approaching it, they're parallel parking?
I'm looking at the new spaces that they just, to mitigate the wetlands, they pulled in, and they're backing out, they will be backing out on Calhoun. So if they back in, then at night, when, after the games, which are mostly in the evenings, they will be pulling out straight and not having to back out on a street. Thirty cars backing out on a street on a corner is not healthy. So if you have them backing into the space and being able to see where they're going when they're leaving, that's, that's better.
City manager, I take it you would look at that issue under the guise of parking that is even permissible under our code? Yes, sir. Very good. Item 4G is an update on the Joe's Bio redesign and redevelopment project. You have in your packets an email from the DEP. Bottom line is, there's, the plans for the development are 90% complete. The DEP and their staff is working with our city staff on pre-application meeting to begin the DO process. The couple of big issues that are being dealt with, one is the waiting on the Army Corps permit, which was moving slow enough as it was, but now that the government has shut down, there's, you know, there's no timeline to be seen, but even at that, the Corps would not give DEP a ballpark of when they may address it and work on issuing a permit. So while we are moving forward with the development order process, that's kind of at a standstill until that permit comes in. Also, there's still an issue with some funding, so the DEP is looking to resolve that as well. So we're thinking, you know, late, probably 2027, before this thing gets too much traction, at least next year at the earliest, but we will keep you posted as it moves forward. Another issue regarding Joe's Bio is the ordinance that you've asked us to work on drafting. If you recall, some of the criteria for that ordinance was supporting documentation of a problem, how many instances there are, and the magnitude of those instances. So in conversation with the sheriff's office, they really don't have the bandwidth or to clearly demonstrate what those issues may be and how often they may be occurring or the severity of them. So what we're planning to do is reach out to the general public, and Dr. Young will give us an update, a little more depth in just a moment regarding the utilizing the residents in the area and their little video cameras of taking pictures and photographs and videos of what we would consider violations, dangerous situations, people doing silly things, and submitting them through an email address, so we can have a repository for that information, and Ms. Kopp and I will continually monitor that, and when we think there's enough data and sufficient information there to support the ordinance, we will bring that back to you for consideration. So 4H is the financial reports that you get each meeting, four hour draft minutes for the boards and committees. We're actually gonna kinda redevelop those a little better, so that when there are motions that need to be made from any of those committees, we'll make sure they get before you. Couple other announcements, the vision session, Lisa Gunderson, who is handling our Leadership Academy for our employees, has agreed to lead that session for us this year or next year, but she'll begin that process this month with having some interviews with our staff, and we're looking at all levels of staff, we wanna get some, she's looking for feedback from staff as what they see going on in the city and some input from them as we look at the vision. And then next month, and probably into December... And then next month, and probably into December, maybe even, meet with each of you individually to hear what your thoughts of a vision should be and how she can begin formulating that prior to our public session in either January or February of next year. Then we had the, those that were fortunate enough to attend the e-bike meeting last week in Niceville, some of us had to go home and fix a P-trap on a kitchen drain where the dishwasher decided to discharge into the kitchen floor instead of the drain. So thank you very much for that, Ms. Kim. But three kind of things came out from the.
What about you?
Huh?
You?
Yeah, me. Yeah, yeah. Just as I pulled in, my wife called and said, you might want to come home, because the dishwasher hit the kitchen floor and not the drain. And I said, thank you. E-bike, my wife. You know how that went. Oh, no, wrong Kim, I'm sorry. Timmy and Kim, I'd have fixed hers too, but I mean, not the best of an e-bike meeting. But kind of three things came out from the, that meeting was, one, we need a unified ordinance, and the city manager from Niceville is working on that and will distribute that whenever it gets wrapped up. That we work on making sure that the e-bikes are headed in the right direction, whether they're on a sidewalk or in the street, and then that work on education and communication of the issues that surround them. I know Ms. Trammell was there, and she might want to offer more in depth, and I know Dave and Robert and some of our other staff members were there, so any of you that might have more than that, feel free.
Well, I can tell you that it was a unanimous decision that every municipality and the county also decided that the e-bike ordinance that we go through needs to be the same everywhere, because as usual, the bikes are all over the place. The directionality was they must be on the side, if they're on the sidewalk or in a bike lane, they must be going with traffic. And so that was part of the issue that they're working on. And the education was to involve also education in their native tongue, if we can find. My suggestion was they go to churches, because we have Hispanic churches, we have several churches that speak the native tongue, and we can then meet there, or the Parks and Safety Committee, Parks and Safety. Public Works and Safety Committee can meet with them and explain when the ordinance is passed, that we did pass an ordinance, and this is what it means, so we are now educating our public in their native tongue, so that if they don't speak English and can't get that information, that they're now aware of that. So basically, those were the three. I don't think, did we come up with anything else? I didn't think so. But it was an outstanding meeting, and there was a lot of people that didn't understand that we have to accept it. It's here to stay. It may even get worse before it gets better. But everybody was very cordial, and those were the three things that we decided we'd shoot for first. So we're just waiting for Niceville's city manager. He was already working on an ordinance with Niceville, and as soon as he gets it, he'll pass it on to the rest of us for tweaking in our municipalities.
Besides the churches, I would look to the employers, because they hire typically these folks from one Eastern Europe or Jamaica, or they go and the services that they use to hire these folks will provide, or can provide, I'm not saying they will, can provide that translation as they are bringing them into the country to say.
Yes, that was understood.
That's all we have, Sheriff. Dr. Young?
Yeah, I would like to thank Captain Fulham and Emily Pickens and the rest of the team who ran that e-bike workshop, helped coordinate it, in addition to those that were able to attend in person. There were about six of us locally from Destin that listened to the whole thing, watched the live stream, so it was very helpful. And we did have discussions recently about the Portuguese and Spanish and other languages that we do have in this town. And we have reached them through the written word in the past, through the top 10 employers, and the employers were really receptive and helpful, so I think doing that again on a bigger scale makes a lot of sense, as well as introducing it more with the churches. Our city manager referenced the request for the public to send us photos and videos of concerns or questions or incidents that they may notice out at Joe's Bayou. The email address to use for that is publicinfo@cityofdestin.com, and we are working with radio stations, TV stations, newspapers, and our area's biggest blog to push the word out about that. And so we will pass that along to both the city manager and city attorney as those come in. We have our community yard sale this Saturday, October 11th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the community center. We will be closed on Monday for the federal holiday of Columbus Day. We have our annual open house on Wednesday, October 22nd. That's from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the community center, and the entire community is invited out for that. And we provide the lunch and drinks for that and music, so it's a really nice opportunity for city staff and council that can make it to interact with our community members and answer questions and share things about our department. We will have shredding, paper shredding before at city hall, as well as at the community center, so we've pushed out the details of timing on that to the media. And then last week, we received the annual Friend of the Watershed Award by the Chequahatchee Basin Alliance. The Friend of the Watershed Award is given out for demonstrated long-term commitment to improving our local waterways, so we were very proud as a city to get to receive that. Thank you.
Have any public hearings tonight, correct? We'll move on to comments and presentations from mayor or council. Councilmember Braden.
Thank you, mayor. Does anyone know when the state, the state either approved or certified or our current comp plan? I'm sorry, I don't know the correct terminology, but I hope some in this room understands what I'm trying to ask.
Are you talking about the year report?
No, our comp plan.
Do you mean recent amendments or?
The whole comp plan was approved five, six, seven years ago. I don't know when that was.
I think, yeah, so to Councilmember Bagby's point, we call that the year. Every seven years, the entire comp plan is reviewed. So it was about, I think, six years ago. We're getting ready to get into the next. Dave, am I right? Was it about six years? Steve or Dave?
Yeah, I believe the last time was about 2018.
Because we've been talking about how we're about to start the next review, so that would be coming to council.
So I know when I got first elected 11 years ago, the comp plan was five years out of compliance then. So now it's been approved or completed six years ago, and we still have not got the LDC completed. Is that a true statement? Are we still working on the LDC?
We're always working on the LDC, yes.
So we're still six years in the making, and we still ain't got, even the council even approved, I think it was a $30,000 spending for outside personnel to help get it done?
I'm not playing director of community development. There's two different things. We are currently in the middle of redoing the LDC, but not necessarily from the year report that said you have to fix these things. So those should have been corrected.
Those were done.
Years ago. So I'm not, are you talking about our current rewrite that we're in the middle of that some people wanted to stop because of Senate Bill 180? Or are you talking about the corrections from the year report in 2018, I guess?
I don't know. I know we was working on the comp plan for several years to get it, and then we was told that we could not start the LDC rewrite until the comp plan was passed and approved by the state. Is that true?
I wasn't on the council.
That's how the process went. We had to, we could not work on?
So the 2018 EAR, Evaluation Appraisal Review, or annual, something, I can't remember what exactly it is. So that started in 2018. I believe it finished up about 2019. And all the changes that were needed per that review were completed with several LDC amendments. And then in 2021, in April of '21 is when council approved the contract to do the comprehensive rewrite of the LDC. And staff has been working on that LDC rewrite since then. And we are, we have all the final drafts of all the articles, and they have come before city council workshops from July of last year through December. And so we're reviewing those again, and based on the comments from the feedback from the workshops and the LPA meetings and all that, and putting them together.
So the comp plan was, the new comp plan was done and passed, submitted to the state and approved and all, whatever had to be done in 2018. And then we started the rewrite of the LDC to get that. And then, so that was, the whole rewrite of the LDC was completed when?
The LDC rewrite's not complete.
So why did I get all these stupid looks when I said it's been six years and we still haven't gotten it done?
Because the comp plan and the LDC rewrite did not start at the same time.
That's what I just said.
Yeah, the comp plan was 2018, and then Steve was saying the LDC rewrite started around 2021.
Because we kept asking about the comp plan, because it was five years out of compliance when I first got elected, and I don't know when it was, 2012, 2014? So we got that, and I kept saying, well, why can't we start on the LDC? Because we know there's a lot of problems with it. We can't. Staff kept saying, we can't even start the LDC until the comp plan is finished, passed, approved at the state. Then we started the LDC rewrite, because I guess the staff, tell me if I'm wrong, when I come in for a development order, you're going off the new comp plan and the old LDC.
So there's, there's, there's no new comp plan. It's just, it's, the EAR takes a look at to make sure that, one, we're compliant with state regulations, and then any other changes that might need, that we might not be following in the LDC, or the LDC is not following per the comp plan, right? And so you have to do that audit. And so all those changes were completed with the 2018 EAR. So we're looking at the comp plan, and we're looking at the current LDC. And so I'm not quite following the new comp plan and old LDC, because it's, we're just, they're the same documents, they're just updated and amended from time to time.
So the LDC and comp plan is the same document?
No, they're two different documents.
But you just said they were same document.
So the comp plan is our objectives, goals, and policy. It's like our, akin to our, I'm just gonna, for the audience. It's just like our constitution almost. And then our enacting regulations underneath the comp plan, our comp plan policies, and then our actual regulations. Our LDC regulations are amended all the time. We have regularly brought, every time we bring you an ordinance that amends a development regulation, that is an LDC amendment. Every time we bring you an ordinance that deals with the comp plan, it's a comp plan amendment. So we've never taken the whole comp plan and started over, and we've never given you an entire rewrite of the LDC. But there is an LDC rewrite going on that started in 2021. But what I'm saying is there were other amendments to the LDC. We do them all the time. That happened after the comp plan and go on every day. For example, the last one you did, we amended the LDC dealing with noise. Oh, sorry, that was the Code of Ordinances, but with livery vessels, noise, short-term rentals. All these things that come are either an amendment to the LDC or the Code of Ordinances. So they're happening all the time. If you're asking about the status of the LDC rewrite, that started around 2021, we have a complete first draft that has gone through many committees and had a lot of input, and as parts of it have come to council at workshops, but it's being perfected. We have a new community development director who's put some brilliant input into it as well, and we have a schedule where we're intending to bring you portions of it in the upcoming months, I think, starting in either November or December. We did get a one-month delay on LPA recently because of a quorum issue, so it was gonna be October, but it is in the process. It has not stopped.
So I know the comp plan is kind of a, if you will, broad spectrum of what's going on in the city, and then the LDC is more of a defined definition, gets drowned in the nitty-gritty. So how much of that LDC, how many chapters of that LDC has been approved that the building department is using with the comp plan?
Well, there have been many LDC ordinances dealing with the building department, but recently, the council has been moving them out of the LDC and into the code. So all those ordinances you've seen within the past year where we've deleted building code provisions from the LDC, we've moved them to the Code of Ordinances. That is a part of the LDC rewrite, but you haven't gotten it all at once. So right now, they are applying the current LDC to any questions that involve a land development regulation, and the Code of Ordinances contains building provisions.
So how many chapters of the LDC has still not been finalized?
As part of the rewrite, none of it has been finalized as one, because what we're going to do is have you approve it all at once. The reason is, staff is moving things all around. The chapter numbers are not going to be the same, the definitions. When you change a definition, you're essentially changing everything, and we don't want unintended consequences, so they're gonna make everything effective all at once. But they are going to take article by article or chapter by chapter to you in the coming months before the final mass approval.
So I know, I don't know how or why this is so complicated, or... But I know we had the comp plan, and we had the LDC. And a builder, and I know how it happened, the comp plan, if a builder came in, wanted to develop something, if it was to the comp plan specs, he'd get it approved. Or if it was to the LDC specs, he'd get it approved, because one was not married to the other. Yeah, because I read, I was going through the comp plan, and you go through a section talking about looking at, say, sidewalks, and it says, refer to page so-and-so in the LDC, and you go over there, and that page is talking about the dog park or something. Had nothing to do with, and there's several of that in the LDC. So we had to get the comp plan, because it was out of compliance with the state. We had to get that, I don't know if you want to call it a rewrite, get it up to speed, whatever, get it to the state, because that took several years for us to get that done, whatever that was. The state approved it. It was in effect with the city. That was the new developers, whatever. That's the staff had to go by that comp plan or whatever. And then the LDC, we couldn't start the rewrite of the LDC or get it married to the comp plan, like it's supposed to, until after that comp plan was approved by the state. So when people come in for a development order, or whatever, the staff was looking at the comp plan and then the LDC that didn't make any sense to this comp plan at all. So we're in the midst of rewriting that, so... Like, I tried to ask a minute ago, if the staff is looking at the comp plan, if I want to come in and build a subdivision or RV park or whatever, they're going by the comp plan. Comp plan says, yeah, and then the LDC says, well, no, you can't do it because of this. Or is it going by the new LDC that, as we rewrite this LDC, is that law as it's being rewritten day to day?
No, it's the existing LDC that's in effect now.
Okay, that was the LDC that was in effect prior to 2018? So we've been working on the new LDC for?
We amend the LDC, parts of the LDC, all the time.
I know we amend it. We've amended stuff, because I voted on.
So if you want to call it the 2018 LDC, I would say yes, the 2018 LDC as amended from time to time.
But it's still not complete?
Well, we'll always probably amend the LDC, right? Because as the city has different needs, we make amendments. As things come to your attention, e-bikes is an example. You know, whatever issues come to us, we tend to amend the LDC to meet the needs of the city.
Does the LDC have to be approved by the state like the comp plan does?
No, it does not. It needs to be consistent with the comp plan, and that's. It needs to be consistent with the comp plan and that's why you got the advice back in 2018, that we couldn't change the LDC until the comp plan was changed because the state law is the comp plan rules. So to the extent of any inconsistency between the comp plan and the LDC, the comp plan would rule. So you gotta change that first and then we make the LDC match.
So how much longer do we have before the LDC is fully, all the chapters that went through, complete, it marries the comp plan?
I mean, I think we made the amendments to match up with the comp plan that was changed in 2018. Now, we're just making additional improvements in general. It's not necessarily all comp plan amendment. If there are inconsistencies right now between the LDC and the comp plan, that, and that's getting wrapped into the LDC rewrite, then that will happen on the schedule for the overarching LDC rewrite, which I think, do you guys have a schedule yet? Share it.
So it's, it's, it's a fairly aggressive schedule, but, um, we should be wrapping up, um, Article 11 sometime in June of next year with, with, um, public meetings, ordinance, ordinance approvals and everything, so.
That doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that you're not gonna see it until June. It means you're going to see it every month.
Yeah.
Starting in November until June because they're going to take you chapter by chapter and there are 11 chapters.
So when did we start chapter one? Because I know we was going chapter one and then chapter two and chapter three. When did we start chapter one, 2018, 2021?
I think it was around 2021, but you, but it went to many boards and it kept getting changed and it kept getting improved and it got, when it got to a certain point, it did, chapter one did go to council. But a lot of the other chapters haven't come to council yet, so.
So how many chapters have come to council?
I don't remember, only, only a few, a handful.
Every, every chapter has come to council through workshop.
Not for approval.
Yeah, not for approval, just, just for workshop, so.
So staff can't go by the new LDC until the council approves it? So we're still working under the old LDC?
Correct.
We're working under the existing LDC, yes.
Okay.
It's, it's difficult Rodney because in 2018, if you want to call it the 2018 LDC, yes, we're using that, but we have done other amendments to it rather than just replace it. When you, when you get any ordinances that deal with land regulations, we are amending the LDC. So it's not exactly the same as 2018, but we haven't replaced the entire 2018 LDC. Does that make sense?
Okay, how much have we replaced?
Zero.
None.
So in six, five years, we have replaced none?
It's still been, yeah.
No, they've improved it.
They haven't replaced it.
They have thrown it out and started it again.
Okay, twenty-one, five years.
I think, I think there's a couple of things in play, is there's an effort to do a rewrite of the land development code and that's been going on probably too long. Uh, I've asked Dave to put a rigid timeframe together of when it will be nailed down and get to the, um, what's the committee I'm thinking about?
LPA.
LPA, thank you. Planning Commission in Walden County, but I couldn't remember the one. And, and to get it back to council sequentially to eventually get it all circled back around. And I think June of next year is kind of what that timeframe looks like because of the individual components. And so that's, that's one part of it. That's the big rewrite redo. In the interim, starting back from 2018, 19, whenever it was, when the ERA, EAR identified components that needed to be amended to align with the comp plan, those were accomplished in relatively short order. But in the interim, there have been changes and amendments to the, um, land development code to accommodate the desire of council, whether it was changing, um, sign ordinance or changing, uh, you know, a land use or whatever it may have been. So two or three things have been in play. The alignment of the, um, uh, land development code, uh, as changes were identified in the, uh, EAR process in 2018 or whenever that was. Amendments moving forward to capture new ordinances or regulations that council so fit. And then the rewrite to kind of redesign and recraft the thing to make sure we've got all of those amendments, uh, subsequent amendments adopted and in the right place and in a, a enforceable mechanism. And then, um, to make sure we're, we've captured all those changes in the meantime. I don't know if that's, offers any clarity or not, but that's kind of what I was getting.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying and it was a little clearer than what I've been getting from everyone. And it's came up from the people in, um, Crystal Beach was here tonight talking about these huge houses and stuff. And it just seems like when I come in for development order to build a home or whatever, the comp plan says I can do one thing and the LDC says I can do something else because it's, it's a mess. It was a mess. And the council has not approved all the new changes in the LDC except for some small ones that we've done here along the way. I get that. I understand that a hundred percent. So I've asked a question three or four times, are we still working under the old LDC? And, and like Jim said, yeah, we're still working under the current LDC, which is the one that's, really doesn't make any sense. I mean, we've, we've rewritten a lot of it, but it's not law yet from the council. Is that a, could that be a true, true statement?
You say it's not law yet? If it's, if council has taken action to amend it and those amendments have been approved by council, it is law.
So all the, the chapters or higher, whatever, one through 11, whatever you want to call them, council's approved one, two and three? Council hadn't approved anything? Take a stab, Larry.
Let me say this, at some point, council approved everything that's in there. Now whether it's, um, and, and I would say whatever's there is the latest version of council approval. Is, is it all what you want it to be? Probably not because they're very seldom are they. But, um, did, did that make sense?
So if I come in and, and for development, if, what's it, how much that LDC the staff go by as far as the, as far as the, the new stuff that we've, not the stuff they've been working on and come to workshops and all that, that the council hadn't approved, do they, if it, that LDC says right there that, you know, it hadn't been approved by council, but it now, you know, the old one says I gotta have so much green space. But the, the new LDC that council hadn't approved yet says you gotta have twice that. Which one are you going by? The old one?
The existing?
What you're calling the old one?
Yeah, or I'm calling the old one, okay.
The one that has had council action to approve.
Okay, so how much of the, how much of the LDC has the council made action to approve since 2021? Of that, how many chapters?
Zero.
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 So let me help you.
Okay.
2018, had the year, made the changes in the year. I wasn't on the council then, but I know they made the changes, maybe it was 2020. Then we had COVID hit, which slowed down the LDC. 21, when I did come back on the council, one of the first things I asked Lewis was, where are we on the LDC rewrite? And Lewis said, well, we're just starting. We've hired this consultant, they're gonna help us, we're gonna do all this, you know, we have some personnel challenges because we don't have a full staff and we're trying to go through all this. So he gets in 2022, he tells me by Christmas of 2022, we will have the LDC rewrite. And we were sitting right up here and Lewis, bless his heart, I think he, he had the best of intentions, but we still had some personnel issues and we couldn't get, and the main thing we are fixing in the LDC is exactly what you described about 15 minutes ago of, I go and it says the, in the comprehensive plan, you know, reference this paragraph or reference this sub-paragraph and I go to that paragraph or sub-paragraph and it's talking about e-bikes or it's talking about, you know, vessel, livery vessels or something that's not even related to how many stairs, you know, or what depth I can have on my lot or setbacks or whatever. That's the main, we're cleaning up the LDC, it's the comp plan rules, it's the constitution, then all the rules are in the LDC of, you know, this is the specifics. They've brought every one of those chapters to us. They even brought the glossary to us in a workshop environment. I, I don't remember if you were here or not, but we've seen all of them. And then, you know, we had the, Lewis got sick, Lewis was C manager, we didn't have a planning director, we, the Senate Bill 180, I mean, we could go on for the next 30 minutes on things that slowed down the rewrite of the LDC, none of which are acceptable to me, but they, they are a fact and we are where we are. But in two months or next month, November, they're gonna start bringing chapters back for our approval. And those chapters, we'll have a chance to go through and go, you know, or what I do is I put out the comp plan and go, yep, okay, that references the proper paragraph. But right now, you're gonna find in the current LDC, bad references, but that is the rules that we have and they generally support the compro, and I would say, or in concert, they may not be in the right place in the LDC or they may not have the right reference, but they are matching with the comprehensive plan. Does that make sense?
Makes a lot of sense and that's pretty much what I was saying and I was just wondering, when I said something about a rewrite of the LDC, everybody was, well, we're not rewriting the LDC, we're always changing, changing the LDC, but you say rewrite the LDC and it's all fine. I mean, I feel like I'm sitting there looking.
About four years after it should have gotten here, but that's beside the point.
I'd say we're not gonna solve this issue tonight. Rodney, you have anything else?
No, I was just trying to get a simple question and I think, I think Jim, Jim summed it up.
Ms. Ramon?
I have a couple, excuse me, a couple of things tonight. A question for you, Mayor, um, when we talked about, uh, the free board issue, uh, we did not set a date certain when we wanted that back. Do we have any idea when that's coming back? Because we have a lot of people out here interested and I don't want them attending every council meeting until they, the free board, the free boarding issue? We talked about having staff bring it back. I didn't know about when they thought they could bring it back.
Well, that's so easy, I'll ask the city manager and get it.
Bring it back, when?
Wes, can we do the first meeting in November?
Yeah.
Okay. First meeting in November, thank you. And the Harbor CRA has a motion tonight to look, uh, they made a motion requesting us to ask the sheriff's department to patrol the boardwalk near the end of each shift in the off-season, I'm not sure why just the off-season, to ensure the safety of the boardwalk and review that it is well-lit. And I have John here to explain anything about that.
Uh, John Stevens, chairman of the Harbor CRA. That was brought up by one of our committee members, um, who's expressing, uh, she was a restaurant owner on the harbor, that there is a lot of questionable activity occurring the later parts of the evening, uh, potentially some stuff disappearing off some boats. And so one of the suggestions was, uh, we have a, uh, our, our officer over here and, uh, I wouldn't sure his hours, but potentially maybe at the end of his shift, if he wasn't doing anything, he can patrol the harbor and see if there's any mischief going on. But it turned out, I think it's, it's later hours in his shift, so when I, when I talked to him afterwards, but we were hoping to get a little more security at night, uh, up and down the harbor.
I would say we should direct the city manager to have the discussion with the sheriff's department.
All right, okay. All right, and, uh, the other motion here, John, was basically between y'all to update the work plan for the camera system. So when you present your work plan, you can give us that period. Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Mr. Bagby.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so we have the schedule for the LDC rewrite because that was one of the questions and I will try to reach out to the Crystal Beach, my fellow Crystal Beach people and let them know they should have been here when those three big houses on Shiro were going up because it's just gonna keep cascading. Uh, I did have a question come up to me, I forgot to ask Dave during my meeting. When we sit, when the sign on the house says six vehicles, I think I know the answer, but is an L, is a licensed LSV counted as one of those six vehicles? Okay.
I'm hearing yes from Steve.
I think it is, but could y'all please confirm that?
Okay.
Because we've got people, you know, and it says seven vehicles and they got seven vehicles and then they got two LSVs parked in the grass or on the sidewalk or whatever. I just, I just want to confirm that.
We'll confirm.
So, and then we had the guy, uh, the property manager come up and ask us two questions. Hopefully he's watching, probably not, but could we answer his questions? Number one, where's the money going? Chris, is Crystal still back there? I know the answer to this, but I'll let you answer it.
Uh, in, in short, our cost for law enforcement, uh, especially, uh, between the sheriff's contract, which is additional augmented law enforcement for the city and the lifeguard, um, has gone from, uh, two and a half million up to over four million.
Yep.
Over the past few years. And so with the influx of all of the people through the short-term rental programs, uh, we're hoping that that'll help us offset the costs of, uh, public safety.
And then do the hotels pay it? And I know the answer.
The hotels pay, uh, BTRs, but they're not subject to the city's short-term rental item.
And that's all the question, I just want to make sure when people come and ask us, I know we don't answer them when they come and ask us, but sometime during the meeting, we need to make sure we answer their questions because they've taken the time to come out of their life to come here and ask questions, I'm sorry. Did I ask why?
No, can you ask her why so they can get the answer as to?
Oh, yeah.
More than yes or no.
Will you explain why the hotels don't? But she kind of gave that.
She did give that.
Yeah, um, I'm sure, um, the bottom line is a BTR for a hotel is based on occupancy and it's far higher than a BTR for a short-term rental.
I just wanted them to know.
Yeah, and while the hotels don't pay, short-term rentals and condos do, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so that, that takes a lot of them in under the umbrella. Go ahead.
Sorry, the hotels do pay, not, not in Destin.
Right.
But they pay the bed tax.
That's right.
Right.
So they do pay the bed tax, okay.
Yeah, I'm glad, uh, he asked a question I wanted to ask and I wanted to make sure it was very clear. People don't understand the cost that we now have to spend to have our excellent sheriff's department because of an extra, you know, a million dollars for that and the lifeguards. And I watched today with double red flags, people getting in the water and some kids struggling and lifeguards that are not even in the section are coming to save these Tennessee tourists that, because they don't know that two red flags means don't go in the water. So unfortunately, the short-term rentals, they don't see that. They just say, well, we've charged our people this amount for this, they're already paying this. They don't understand, all of their visitors are coming in from out of town for a week at a time and don't understand the severity of a rip current or the waves that are coming in with double red flags. So I'm glad you spoke to that and I just, like I said, wanted to reiterate the amount of money we have to spend to keep our sheriff's department because we don't have a police department. That's gone up significantly and well worth it and the amount we have to spend now on our lifeguards and life-saving, uh, medics for the city to manage. The other thing I wanted to talk about was in the LDC, I know that you've got a timeline, but is there someone in, and I guess city manager, I need to ask you this since they don't work directly for me, but is there a way to put like, someone just on the rewriting, like Steve, give him just that job and make it just all he does since he's so good at getting it, you know, like honed in so we can maybe move it a little bit better now that we're able to have more staffing? I'm just kicking this down there to you, Larry. You're grinning, but I don't see any kind of answer coming, so I'm, I'll let you talk to David about that, but that's my thoughts. Maybe if we had someone that was totally focused on it with, you know, maybe some of our land development expertise lawyer down there helping a little bit of coding, you know, it could help maybe move this LDC sooner than eight months from now. But just throwing that out there, okay? You don't have to reply. It took a lot of time to rewrite that LDC, but I can do it. And then the gentleman from Crystal Beach also said something about the notice of development sign. I do know that we, we see those in some of like the area off of Calhoun, you know, we got. I do know that we see those in some of like, the area off of Calhoun, you know, we got a billboard, basically, that says city, you know, development. Is there none of that that goes into an LLC that's putting in a six to 10-bedroom house on Crystal Beach? Do they not, is that not part of putting in any kind of signage, Larry?
I'd say that, yeah.
So whenever there's a development, that kind of commercial development, and they're LLCs, is there not supposed to be, like, they come to the city, they get their permitting, and then there's like, an advertisement that this is going to be approved?
Point of clarity.
Put on your speaker.
Point of clarity, if it's a single-family dwelling that they get a building permit for, the answer is no. If it is a commercial development that requires a development order, the answer is yes. I'm speculating that most of those are qualifying as single-family dwellings, that they come to see Ms. Noel and get a building permit, and they do build a big house. And so probably absent some mechanism in the land development code that offers some clarity to that, and Ms. Con, you have, I think there's something different there, but I think that's where the issue is coming in. What's a single-family dwelling, and how big is a single-family dwelling, and what's a commercial development?
And so our LDC currently, because we're still working on it, probably doesn't hone in on that sizing of a single-family home in residential areas for like, short-term rentals?
No, right, remember, state law says we can't prohibit a short-term rental in residential areas, we have to allow them. Then the council has to decide, and has not wanted to put a limit on size or number of bedrooms in residential homes, because you didn't want to, you know, impact the residents that live there. So that was the choice. Do we want to limit the size and number of bedrooms in homes, in particular zoning districts, or not? You can regulate the number of bedrooms if you want to, but we haven't done that yet. It would be for both short-term rentals and residents.
Right, got it. All right, well then, on to a couple of things that are under my name. The first one is, I don't know how to do this, if I need to make a motion, but I was wondering if we could give the city employees the day after Christmas, the 26th of December, it's a Friday, just make it like a four-day weekend, so-
Is that a motion?
Yeah, can I make a motion to approve it? Okay, great.
All right, do we have any discussion on that motion?
Thanks.
None, then we will vote. Ms. Kevin, we have no discussion, right?
They do get vacation days, right?
Yeah.
Stop it.
Kevin, you get to vote, unless you have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
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 That's almost as good as FRS, that passes unanimously.
Awesome. Y'all enjoy Christmas, okay? And then I also, I've had a few people tell me that they didn't realize that they didn't live in the city of Destin, but they were eligible to buy an annual pass to park in all the city parking lots when they're working downtown, or whatever. So I just wanted to put it on the public record that if you're a non-resident, and you still want access to like, the sticker, because you're here all the time, you're parking, and you don't want to pay $15 a day, it's $205 a year, is that correct, Larry?
Yes, ma'am.
For an annual parking pass, and the same goes for the Joe's Bayou boat ramps. If you are not a city resident, but you like, live in one of the other areas that are non-residential, you can still buy an annual pass. So in January, go get your annual pass for the year, if you're a non-resident, but you're always using the parking lots. And that was all I had, but Sandy, you had a question on-
I did. Remember when we had on Main Street, the 10-bedroom place that was going up?
It's still going up.
One of the things that I found out that happened there was, the letter that they're supposed to get from Destin water users was not gotten before they got their development order there. And they didn't have the capacity for 10 bedrooms. So I want to make sure that we're getting that letter before some of these places are given their ability to build. Because if we're building all these huge, big places, and all of a sudden there's not capacity in the sewer line, it's going to be a little hectic for a while.
Certainly follow up on that.
Yeah, so if you would follow up on that, and just make sure that that's part of the permit process.
Yes, ma'am.
But as for me, Mayor, that's all I've got tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Tori.
I almost forgot what I wanted to talk about.
[laughing]
Let me see, oh, I need to remove a member that hasn't been active in the Harbor CRA Advisory Committee, Casey Jones, and I need to add an individual that wants to take that place, Sheridan Gibson. Can I make a motion to do that?
Yes.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Yeah, can we remove and replace it in one motion?
You gotta have two motions.
Dang, we can't just make this easy. Can I make a motion to remove Casey Jones, since he hasn't been active?
I'll second Casey Jones' removal.
All right, any discussion? None?
Did he not request removal? I mean, did he not resign?
As far as I know, no. I've reached out and called a phone number, Ray Bailey has called several times a phone number, and we've never got anybody to answer or return a call. Is that correct, Mr. Bailey?
Yes, sir.
And do we have to have them present, I mean, be notified that they are up for removal at the meeting? I don't remember what it says.
We tried to, but can't get a hold of them.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
That's right, lost your substantiated, that's good, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
Mr. Braden, is it yes?
Yes.
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 All right, passes unanimously, now we have a nomination.
I would like to nominate Sheridan Gibson.
Second.
Hi.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
Do we have her application, Ray, do you have her application?
I just received it, just now.
I got it on my phone.
Wow, that's good.
All right, great.
All right, Mr. Braden, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Trammell?
Yes.
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 All right, passes unanimously.
That's all I got.
Very good. Mr. Schmidt?
Is there a few things?
No.
Oh, gosh, I apologize, I'm going to say bear.
Not just about it all.
All of you. I know we've had branding things like, leave no trace behind, on everything, so what is the process for an ICFAS?
Can we make a motion to do that?
Possibly, I don't know, I'm just asking, is that like, a branding thing? Is that a city logo thing? If we were to add the ICFAS that was brought up on our-
What are we trying to brand?
No, we want to bring the fish, like he just said.
Religion and government separate, right?
Yeah, that's what they say. Oh, no, religion, I'm not sure it's completely-
Sticker, can we do that as a sticker?
Is that a religion versus church versus state thing?
I appreciate that.
Sure, turn your microphone on, so we can all hear you.
So I appreciate and respect that, but I can see this getting out of hand in like, a nanosecond, where now we have crosses, and we have stars of David, and we have everything, you know, every half, not half-moons, what's the Muslim symbol, the crescent, the crescents, and everything else going on top of our street signs, and I'm just like, there's a place for that, the back of your car, or your house, or your lot, or your whatever, I'm just, I'm very nervous about doing that on city signage.
Do we have any city signs right now, like in Godwe Trust, or anything like that, in our cars, or is that the sheriff's department, or is that not? I know it's a school district, school district added it to the schools in Godwe Trust on the outside, on all the schools a couple of years ago.
I'm not sure.
Do we have any city property, what are we doing, saying words?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Does the sheriff's department do anything like that?
Walton County Sheriff does have, you know, Godwe Trust on their-
It's on some of our seals, it's not on any of our vehicles or anything like that.
So I guess the question then, to go back to my original question, for the, we have leave no trace everywhere, right? Does the council, do we vote to like, we want a champion, leave no trace everywhere we go on all of our publications? Was that like, a council resolution, possibly?
I remember council-
That's a law. County law?
I don't know, no, not-
To put an emblem on all of our publications?
Lisa, where'd that come from?
That's TDC.
That came from the PIO prior to Ms. Tam.
His card.
Mm-hmm.
And then like, maybe one night, just at a meeting, brought up, council said, yeah, let's do it.
I'm not really sure the process that it went through.
So if we wanted to do a change, or addition, like, a potential resolution, I guess, the council would have to agree on it.
Take a vote of the council.
A vote of the council, okay. Sounds good. At the next meeting, can you please put under my name, Ray, Charter Review Committee? I'd like to have that on there with some supporting documents for looking into that, doing a charter review committee, please. And lastly, I was out of town, but I saw this article, and it's got to be true, but it was on Facebook, right?
Right. Were all the experts reporting for Rodney?
I don't know if they've closed on it yet, but apparently the state just acquired a lot of acreage for about $84 million, next to Noriega Point, next to our park, which, I saw the article, I was like, wow, that's awesome. Lot of money, but awesome. So I would like to have the council, have our manager and attorney, I guess, reach out to the state, ask if, you know, hey, can we work with you guys, since we have a park right here? Can we also work with y'all, since you just bought this property and combined forces and have one big park? So I don't know if y'all have any interest in reaching out on that, or just letting the state take it over.
Is that a motion?
Sure.
My suggestion would be wait till the purchase happens.
I don't know, I just ran our- I don't know if it has happened.
To my knowledge, it hasn't happened yet, has it?
It has not.
I don't know, Facebook didn't tell me that.
It's under contract, and it was not, it did not close yet, so if you want us to-
Based on the closure, how about that? Based on the closure?
Second.
Okay, what is the motion?
Larry, you want-
To have the city manager and attorney reach out to the state to discuss possible partnership and working with the state and their property.
We've had some good conversations with the county folks, as early as today, of working together. We've reached out to our partners at the state as well, and we're looking forward to, you know, a good partnership on that project. We know that there may be some misinformation out there around, but I can assure you that we're 100% behind a good project that's good for the citizens of the county, for the city, our visitors, our residents, our guests, and based on our conversation this morning, the county's looking for the same thing. So we hope to all partner with the state to put the best product available.
Who have we, who has the city talked to at the state, though? Not the county, the state's buying it, I believe.
The state's buying it, that's correct. We've asked our lobbyists to reach out to the state agencies and some of our legislative delegation there to begin that process, and we've got some good feedback so far.
Well, if y'all are good with that, I guess.
Okay, while I support the general direction of that motion, I'm going to offer a substitute in which we have the staff reach out and say, we support the acquisition of that property for conservation purposes, which I think is what the money is coming from, and that we look forward to collaborating with whatever government agency will go forward to make that happen.
Second. Do I have to recuse myself from this?
No.
All right, any discussion on that? Yes, sir, Mr. Braden?
I've asked this question before, I don't know who it was, but didn't the county have Noriega Point, and then gave Noriega Point back to the city of Destin?
I'm sorry, what was it?
We do own Noriega Point.
The county, did the county have Noriega Point, and then they gave it back to the city of Destin?
I don't think so. I mean-
We didn't actually know who had it, I think, was the discussion.
If we go back to how Noriega, Noriega Point was released from the federal government, it went from the federal government to county, I think, to a private corporation, and then, but the 1,500 feet at the end, which is our Noriega Point Park, was always reserved as a park.
Do we know why the county's wanting to join forces on this one piece of property for a park?
I don't know if the county did, we don't really know that the county's taken any actions at all officially. That's why I would say we need to tell the state we support the land being put into conservation, and that we look forward to collaborating with whatever entity they decide should be in charge.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think the word conservation is the key.
Yes.
Because it was a bird sanctuary.
Yes.
If you remember the, I know you remember, but for the rest of you, if you've looked at any of the old, older maps of Noriega Point, it was designated as a bird sanctuary, and that conservation is key to make sure, because I don't think any of us want to see it developed into a circus location.
Exactly why I put the word in there.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
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 Passes unanimously.
Make it happen.
Anything else? Okay, that leaves me, I'll try to keep it short, we did have quite a delegation from Crystal Beach tonight. I'm not sure they understand the kind of preemption the state of Florida has done to us on regulating short-term rentals, but there are still a few avenues available to us, and I'm glad to hear the one that Ms. Trammell brought up tonight. I wasn't even aware that could be a tool in the toolbox. So I would, I would move that we direct the city manager and the city attorney to try to contact that group, and Mr. Bagby, those are your homies.
Those are my homies.
So I would make you the council liaison for that contact, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, any discussion?
What was that motion again, I'm sorry?
The motion was to have the city manager and city attorney contact the people that came tonight out of Crystal Beach, and discuss with them the limitations of what we can do, and possibly come up with other ideas of what we can do that don't run afoul of the state's, yeah, like the water that, don't run afoul of the state's preemption of our ability to regulate these clearly commercial activities in a residential zone. Okay, if there's no discussion, Mr. Braden?
Yes.
Trammell?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll vote yes.
Yes.
All right, that one passes unanimously, now we go to the city attorney, I think.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Best news I heard all night?
Yep.
Okay. Do we have public comments? Come on up.
This is Neil Bawa, he's my mentee from the Collegiate High School.
Very good.
Awesome. Turn it on.
Nice to meet you all.
Just touch it once to make it ready.
Nice to meet you all. I'd like to introduce myself, as Ms. Sandy Trammell said, I'm Neil Bawa, and I've been a resident here at Destin since I was in kindergarten, and before that, I was in Miramar Beach. Over the summer, I work as a lifeguard at our beaches, and as mentioned by Ms. Teresa Herbert earlier, we were discussing-
It's A-Bear.
A-Bear? Sorry.
How many questions?
But the biggest thing about lifeguarding is preventative measures, and how you're discussing how many of the tourists here do not know about our beaches, they don't know about the safety standards, and a lot of times, they don't even know to pick up their own trash. So I believe that we can do many things about educating the tourists about how to, you know, treat our beaches. And I believe one of the things that we could do is reintroduce these small cards. And now I'm sure that many of you living here in Destin for a while may know what I'm talking about, but lifeguards used to carry these small cards, and what they would say is that they would just have all the different flag types, they'd have green flag, yellow flag, red flag, double red flag, and purple flag, and even the black cross-off no-swimming sign. And they would just tell people that, oh, what each of them meant. And I believe by reintroducing that, we could more effectively educate tourists and other beachgoers on what and what not to do. other beachgoers on what and what not to do. I believe that we can also educate them through mandating condo owners and other like, leased, like, people who are renting out their properties to tenants, to educate them, whether it's just leaving like, a little flyer, like, a little note, or even like, one of those little cards, or even in the house rules, just mentioning some of the flag rules, or just pick up after yourself. I think that could be really effective for keeping our beaches safe and clean, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will adjourn this meeting.